Good afternoon. Welcome to the July 22, 2025 BCC meeting in the South Walton Annex. Thank you all for being here. It looks like we have a full house today. With that, we have all but one Commissioner here. Commissioner Anderson is not going to be with us this afternoon. And so we do have four Commissioners here today. Mr. Kellenberg, would you please?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good afternoon, everybody. We appreciate your attendance today. This County Commission truly believes in representative government, so we invite you to participate and thank you for coming. Before we get started, a few items to help keep the meeting going as it should. If you have any electronic devices, we'd appreciate it if you'd put them on silence or on vibrate, so as not to disrupt the meeting. If you feel compelled to have a conversation with your neighbor, we'd ask that you take it out in the hallway, so as not to disrupt other people that are participating. More than likely, there'll be a difference of opinion in this room today, so I ask that you respect your fellow residents as we go through the course of business. And so let's have a good meeting. If you will join me in the invocation and the pledge, I'd appreciate it. May the Lord be with you. Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to serve the residents of Walton County as elected officials and as staff employees. Bestow upon us the virtues of graciousness and humility as we go about conducting the business of the county. Help us to review these items objectively and impartially, impartially, so that we can make the best decisions for all concerned. And as always, help us to treat everybody with patience and fairness and kindness. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. We're gonna get started today with recognizing a few of our very special employees. So Carrie, Kristi, if y'all can come up to the front, Mary and Karen Morse, people that work with them.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to recognize a couple of our dedicated employees. Speaking to the mic. So it's my pleasure to announce the Quarter Two Employee of the Quarter, Carrie Durkey.
Congratulations.
Carrie has served in administration as our contracts administrative assistants, administrative assistant since 2022. She's been instrumental in modernizing our contracts process, streamlining that process, and is always willing to step in and assist any way that she's asked. She has taken the initiative to expand her knowledge in key areas such as bonds and insurance, and notably, she's just recently, this past Friday, graduated from Certified Public Manager Program in Florida State.
Wonderful.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's my honor to also announce that Kristi Gibson is our Customer Service Award winner for Quarter Two. So I'm sure that most of you know how exceptional Kristi is as a Visitor Center manager and as a person, too. She's just fantastic. Kristi consistently goes above and beyond in delivering outstanding service to our visitors. Her warm welcoming presence and deep knowledge of our area have made her an invaluable resource for the thousands of people that come through the doors of the Visitor Center each year. She consistently provides a level of care and attention that makes every visitor feel like they've found a home away from home. But that is not the only impact that Kristi has. She's also known for her remarkable support of our fellow Walton County employees or our internal customers. She's always ready to lend a hand or step in with a positive attitude when it's needed most. Her kindness, professionalism, and collaborative spirit make her a true cornerstone of tourism in Walton County. She's a strong and steady leader for the Visitor Center team as well, setting a standard of excellence and mentorship that ensures every team member feels empowered and supported. Kristi's commitment to excellent customer service, both in front of and behind the scenes, sets a powerful example of us all. So she also graduated CPM last week, too. So congratulations.
We are delighted that both of you wonderful ladies have are such a blessing to Walton County. We're gonna come down there and get a picture taken with both of you, okay? Walton County. They do a phenomenal job, and thank you very, very much.
Madam Chair? I have just a second. Mary and them mentioned it, but, and tell those ladies not to run off. But we had several of our employees who graduated from the Certified Public Managers Program at Florida State University. And if y'all will stand up, those of y'all who are here that did that?
Take a long look back.
Well, we'll just honor them. We'll say thank you for what they did, because that helps them improve their skills, but it also gives the county a deeper bench. You know, if we need new employees or need to promote people or people retire, that gives us a deeper bench to move people up. So it's, I just want to thank them for going through it personally. And I thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing that. It's an incredible program.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Glad that you were able to follow through with that. Thank you. Okay, let's see. The meeting is called to order, okay? We're gonna consider the additions and deletions. Brian?
Yes, ma'am. We have one ad on your tab which will move to the end of the regular agenda under your tab.
Madam Chair, I have one requested ad. I'd request the Board to give me permission to schedule a special meeting to hold an executive session pursuant to 86011 Florida statute. I am advising you of need for litigation advice concerning the Florida TP versus Walton County case. We are likely gonna try to bookend that immediately following the end of Thursday's meeting, but I do need permission to advertise and schedule that.
Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Is Commissioner Drake here?
No. I don't know where he is.
He was here, and I'm not seeing him.
Okay.
Brian's not here, but I saw him.
We were just looking for a Commissioner that was here.
We can go ahead.
Okay. So we're at the approval of the agenda with the, we've already done that, we've already passed that, so public comments. If you are not going to be here for a topic that is going to be discussed on the agenda and you'd like to speak to it, now would be the time to come up and speak to it. Is there anyone that will not be here and they'd like to speak to an agenda item? Seeing none, okay. What I'd like to do is, we'd like to, we have one agenda item we'd like to move forward. Brian, would you bring that up, please?
Yes, ma'am. So under Commissioner Anderson's tab, there is a request to identify funding and move forward with South Walton Senior Center. So it's really a request for direction. I would ask that our CFO and County Attorney will meet together to identify some funding sources that would be appropriate for that proposed facility and bring it back to you at the next meeting. And if it'd be okay with y'all, there are several people in the room that may like to offer a comment on this. Normally, we would do it by now. Apologize, still trying to get moved into this role. So I was saying, there's an item under Commissioner Anderson's tab. Commissioner Anderson had to leave this morning, couldn't be with us. It is a request to identify funding and move forward with South Walton Senior Center. Previously, there has been a proposed plan or conceptual plan brought forth, and now Commissioner Anderson would like to seek funding. And my recommendation to the Board would be for the CFO and Legal Department to work together to identify some sources of funding and bring them back to the County Commission at a future meeting. We do recognize that there are some people here that would like to talk on this project, and I think that out of respect for them, we allow that even without a motion on the floor. That's okay with the Chair and rest of the Board?
That's fine, but I, you know, I kind of messed up here. I'd like to go ahead and do the items for the consent agenda first, and then we'll go forward with there, anyone that wants to speak.
Okay.
Okay. So is there anything that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? No? Okay, we need a...
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion from the Board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that any ayes? Okay, motion passes. Okay. At this point, if you would like to speak to the Senior Center, please raise your hand. Okay. Seeing none, there...
There was one over in the corner. Lady with the straw hat would like to speak.
Oh, okay. Come on up. Oh, okay. 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 Seeing none. The, what they're gonna do with that, since Commissioner Anderson is not here, is as Mr. Kellenberg stated, they're gonna look at funding sources for that. So if in fact that you are here for that specific purpose only, and you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you are welcome to stay, or you're welcome to go ahead and leave at this point. It's up to you.
We thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you very much.
Guess where it says?
Pardon me?
Citizen's request.
Yes, now we're at the citizen's request. Kaylee Peters is...
Yep.
Hello?
Come on up, Kaylee. Commissioners, this is a request to approve and authorize Chair to sign a resolution recognizing the 90th anniversary of Social Security.
The 90th?
Nineties.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Commissioners. My name is Kaylee Peters. I'm an employee with AARP. Social Security is one of the most successful and popular initiatives in American history, helping generations of older Americans stay out of poverty and live with dignity after a lifetime of hard work. In 90 years, Social Security has never missed a payment. And during the 65 years AARP has been fighting to protect and strengthen Social Security, our nation's leaders from both parties have supported it. Now more than ever, we need our political leaders to speak out, to celebrate Social Security, and ensure it's there, not only for older Americans today, but for our kids and grandkids tomorrow. This year, AARP is proudly honoring that legacy while fighting to secure its future for generations to come. We're working with leaders from both parties because protecting Social Security isn't a partisan issue, it's an American priority. AARP asks that Chair Johns consider signing the proclamation honoring August 14 as the 90th anniversary of Social Security or Social Security Day in Walton County. We extend our heartfelt thanks to Walton County for considering this proclamation. We are grateful for your leadership and the positive difference you continue to make for residents in your community. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate that, and we will sign that, I believe.
Motion to approve it.
Okay. A motion and a second. That's a great milestone for Social Security. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, that motion passes. We will sign that, gladly sign that. And thank you very much for all your hard work and what you do through AARP, and we really appreciate you. And there are a lot of seniors, as many of them just left. A lot of seniors in Walton County, and of course, all over. And so it's a vital piece of work that the state and the county and you all do. So thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you, guys. We're really grateful. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Brian, you're up next.
Item number 17 is an update on the Thriftway Building Assessment. So previously, we came to the Board, there was an ask by a Constitutional Officer to use that building. We felt it prudent to get a structural assessment of it. Since then, the need for that building has waned. So we're seeking direction today on abandoning the structural assessment in favor of demolishing the building, and then also having a discussion on, is it time to start conceptual planning for a governmental center or governmental campus around the courthouse in Defuniak Springs? A few, many years ago, land was acquired in that area for an idea of a judicial center, so to speak. A portion of it was completed with the addition of the courthouse in the 2004, 2005 time period. And then since then, the county has acquired more land in the immediate vicinity of it. So I would recommend that we abandon the structural assessment, give the go-ahead to Public Works to demolish the building down to the slab, and then allow County Admin to engage an architectural engineering firm from our continuing services pool to start property assessment, basic space programming for the different departments and Constitutional Officers that would need to go in a new building, and to begin some conceptual planning.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't have any problem with the administrators' recommendations to that point. I didn't see harm in getting some, an engineer to give us some insurance, but that doesn't seem to be the way the Board wants to go. But what we do need to do is if we're going to start down this path, between the Thriftway property and the current, the old Annex property, the city has an alleyway. And anything we do in the future towards building a government center, that alleyway needs to be abandoned. So what I would ask is, any motion or direction today on the Thriftway building also include giving the County Administrator the authority to go to the city and seek to get that alleyway abandoned.
Okay, that sounds like a great idea. So what do you, you have a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second? Any comments from anyone? I think that's a great idea. I hadn't thought about that, so thank you for bringing that up. Any comments from the audience on this? They're talking about abandoning the alleyway between a couple of buildings up in Defuniak so that we can go ahead and try to move forward with a government center. So, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next item is Engineering. Chance Powell.
Good afternoon, Chance Powell. Item number 18 is a request for direction regarding safety countermeasures for Mack Bayou Road. Several meetings ago, a lady came up and spoke before for y'all at public comment, presumably from the Driftwood area. She has some concerns about three of the 90-degree bends on Mack Bayou Road. Two of those are south of Harborview, one of them is north of Harborview. One of the items that she discussed and brought up was the possibility of taking the overhead power on those curves and moving them underground, because I guess there's been some cases where some vehicles have left the travel lane, struck power poles, and caused a power outage north of that. We reached out to FPL to see what that, what kind of undertaking that would be, and would it provide a benefit in that situation? We were told that by pulling that overhead power underground, there would still be ground-mounted features like ground-mounted transformers and switchcans that would still be vulnerable to vehicles leaving the travel lane and causing the same issues that they see now. We looked at other safety countermeasures to address those issues, like putting in guardrails. Obviously, there's driveway connections on those corners that would restrict our ability to place guardrails on those corners. We also looked at some LED-embedded Chevron signage. These are, the Chevron signage that you would typically see on a curve, there are some there now, but these would be LED-embedded with solar-powered function to them. They would flash either all day or all night at a minimum. We could set, you know, a photocell on them where they'd only operate at night. We did consider a radar detection on them, that they would only flash when the car was approaching, but given the traffic volumes on that road, we didn't think the additional cost would be worth it, so most likely, they would flash all around. That item runs about $18,000 per curve. It would be six of those signs per curve. Other things to consider is the section south of Harborview, which includes two of those curves, is currently under construction with the Mack Bayou Pedestrian Improvement Project, where the travel lanes will be milled and resurfaced. There will be new thermoplastic striping and reflective pavement markers on those curves, so that will enhance the conspicuity of those curves. And then also, you know, the Sheriff's, we could request the Sheriff's Department to increase some enforcement in that area, maybe place a, there's Dynamic Speed Display Sign, it's temporary, that they can, and portable, they can post it out there. It will also collect data for them so they can identify the times of the day that they need enforcement in the area based on what that item, you know, the data that it collects. Another thing that we considered was stop-controlled intersections for those corners. Per the MUTCD, that's the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, it could be warranted for those intersections to be, or curves to be stop-controlled because of the limited sight visibility. There will be opinions on both sides of that, especially from everybody at the end of that street, just wanted to let you know. But we're here today asking for consideration of what y'all, how y'all would like for us to proceed or move forward. We'd be glad to go however y'all like.
Okay. I'm a little bit concerned about the Chevrons, although it sounds good, but if they're gonna be blinking all the time, and the houses there might not like those blinking lights going all day or night. So that's a little concerning, but with the, with the road being redone and two of those curves with the thermoplasting, that might be helpful. Is there anything else that could be like embedded into the asphalt, that maybe reflectors?
The RPMs, reflective pavement markers, like you see on the center lines of the road. I believe the existing contract includes centerline RPMs. We could also have NLS Maintenance apply those, white ones along the white lines on the edge of pavement, too, which would greatly increase the conspicuity of those curves at night time, for sure.
Personally, I think that that would probably be very helpful, in addition to possibly the Sheriff's Office leaving that speed limit mechanism there for a while, just to kind of get everybody's attention, because they, those curves are, you know, they're dangerous, and you can't speed around those curves. And I think just a couple weeks ago, somebody did and went flying off into the woods and went running, so it's very dangerous. So anything we can do to kind of highlight that is great, but I'm just concerned that the blinking lights might be a little intrusive for some people. So that would be my suggestion. Any other ideas?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Well, we'll move forward with the construction activities that we have right now, and if, once that's done, if, you know, if we want to revisit, look at maybe some enhanced, future enhancements, we'll go down that route.
But the other thing I wanted to kind of highlight is, you pointed out that one of the things that she mentioned was the, putting the utilities underground, and that's just not feasible, because the whole purpose would be to get the pole out of the way, but it would instead be replaced by transmitters and things like that, so it really wouldn't do what we wanted it to do. So thank you very much. Appreciate you looking into all that.
Yes, ma'am. That's good. I'll move on to item number 19. This is a request approval to award invitation to bid 2516 to the lowest, most responsive bidder, Southeast Construction Company LLC, in an amount not to exceed $2,650,557.72 for the construction of the County Road 1883 Improvements Phase One project. Just note, this contract will be brought back to you for final approval.
Madam Chair? And, Mr. Powell, this is either SCAP or SCOP?
That's correct.
Funded, correct? This is not...
Grant funding.
This is grant funding. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any conversation here? Any audience member want to speak to this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Number 20 is a request acceptance of the second quarter Engineering Department update. I want to go over just a few, this quarterly report is available online under the Engineering website, but I wanted to go over just a few projects, highlight that the public may be interested in, specifically some that are under design, under construction, and will be under construction. Driftwood Road and intersection in Miramar Beach, we currently have that under design for a signalized intersection. So, you know, it's gonna be several months of that, and there is some funding available for construction of that, but it's most likely not gonna be enough, based on earlier conversations, as y'all are aware of what signals are costing nowadays. Old Town of Santa Rosa Regional Stormwater Management Facility, Phase One, and Nelly Drive Improvements. Design is complete on this. All permits are in hand. It does include two of the stormwater facilities that occur on that 220 acres of the old Foreman property. This project will be under construction towards the end of this year if the proposed budget is approved. Let's see. County Road 183 South Cross Drain Replacement, that's about an $819,000 project in the north end of the county, where we're replacing some old arch culverts with some 10-foot by eight-foot precast concrete box culverts. That's underway right now. Another project is County Road 393 North from Highway 98 up to Chat Holly Road. It has just gotten under construction. Wanted to bring everybody's attention, the traffic circulation that's gonna have to take place during the construction of this project. This is gonna include a lot of drainage improvements on that one-mile section of road between 98 and Chat Holly. It's also gonna include a multi-use path on the west side of the road, very similar to what you see on 393 South. During construction, from the boat dealership, which is just north of 98, from that boat dealership south to 98, we're gonna do our best to maintain two-way traffic throughout construction. There will be minor delays and lane closures while that's being resurfaced and traffic separators being included. From that boat dealership north, it will be northbound traffic only allowed on 393. No southbound traffic will be allowed. They will have to seek alternate routes. The main alternate route is to the west of this, which is Church Street. So I'm gonna go into the next project that we have under construction right now, is Church Street and Mall, which is, and I'm bouncing around a little bit on here, just to...
That's all right.
Do your best to keep up there, Jason. I'm sorry. But, uh, Church Street and Mall intersection, uh, signalized intersection that's currently underway right now. You might have noticed that the mast arm foundations were, uh, were dug. One of them was done this morning. The other one will be done in the next day or so. We do have, uh, the mast arm structure and other signal components that mo- will not be delivered probably until September. But they will be doing underground boars and pulling the, um, uh, setting the detective loops that are in the pavement. We've requested from DOT to allow us to restrict left movements from the north and southbound approaches there. So, if you're, if you're on Church Street headed south, because you can't go on three ninety-three, when you get to, uh, Church Street and ninety-eight intersection, you're gonna be forced to take a right. You'll, if you, if you're ultimately seeking to head east, you're gonna have to go down and make a U-turn. We feel that's the safest, uh, most, uh, most, most easy maneuver to make, given the, given the circumstances. But ultimately, that intersection will be a full, full signalized intersection available to the public once the signal is installed, uh, in September. Let's see. Other projects under construction, as I mentioned earlier, is a multi-use trail path on, uh, on Mack Bayou Road. They've just finished most of the widening on that. There will be some additional lane closures and probably some lengthened lane, lane closures on Mack Bayou Road in mid-August and September as they're doing milling and resurfacing of the roadway. So, be on the lookout for that. I think that's all I really wanted to, uh, the dog park, uh, and the, uh, sports complex, outdoor fitness center. Both of those designed in-house, uh, but, um, facilities at the dog park, there's gonna be three separate, uh, fenced areas out there, one for large dogs, one for small dogs, and the area up on the, on the hill with all the trees that'll be open for just general play. And then we anticipate early next year, the, uh, pre, pre-constructed restroom to be installed first, first of next year.
Pre-constructed restroom?
It is a, it is a hundred-and-fifty-day lead time on that. It's a concrete structure. It's a single-stall restroom with, uh, um, it's, it's being built in the facility right now. It'll all be installed operational in one day when it gets here.
Wow, okay. Okay, great. Um, I have a question about the light at Driftwood. You said that you might not have enough funds right now to finish that.
I, I wanna, I might circle back and look at Anna. Do you know if we have anything scheduled on that? If I've ever worked on that? I know that the board approved seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand for construction back in about twenty-seventeen. But, uh, and, and I think we have some proportionate fair share dollars that are still remaining and left over that we could use for construction. I see a head nod from Melissa.
Okay.
I'm sure that's what we'll be seeking once we get there. But ultimately, we won't, we won't have any type of a cost, 'cause there will be some roadway improvements. There's a, uh, eastbound left turn lane that had to be constructed and we'll be adding a s- northbound turn lane to that, to that intersection as well.
Okay, wonderful. And what about on, you said Mall Drive and Church Street. We can't get that, uh, signal until September?
It, it will not, the, the structures will not be getting installed until September when those mast arms are delivered. It's a long lead time on those.
They're just not built yet.
That's, that, they're not here yet. But, uh, there'll be other work happening in the intersection, but ultimately, the, the part that everybody sees won't happen until Sep- late September.
And just so everybody knows, I think how, it was not that many years ago, they were, what, three-hundred-and-something thousand dollars? And now they're about a million. And they're, they're made specifically for each location.
That's right.
So, plus they've, they've got internal guts of all the computerized data. So, that's why they're so expensive.
There's basically no roadway improvements required there at Chat, I mean, at, uh, Mall Drive, Church Street, and ninety-eight. It's just signal equipment only, and that project was eight-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars. That's just, that's just construction.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank y'all. That's all I have right now.
Okay. Did, are we making a motion on any of that?
No. Uh, well, they are asking, they would ask you to accept the engineering.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, and someone wanted to speak to that. There was a lady that...
She went outside with Janice.
Oh, she did? Okay. Go ahead. You can come on up. There was a lady out there that wanted to speak. Hello, please state your name, please.
Hello, Eric Zalace, A-R-I-X-Z-A-L-A-C-E. Um, I just wanted to, first of all, good afternoon. I wanted to find out more about Highway three ninety-five, north from ninety-eight to the bay. That's something that's been slotted for like a decade and a half, and we have plants growing out of the road now. Um, I know the plans have been approved. We've talked in, we've talked to planning and they said it's supposed to start the fall of last year, the fall of the year before that, the fall of the year before that, and now they're saying it's the fall of this year. So, we're just wondering if we could have a little update on that.
The lady back there, Anna, she will be happy to assist you with that.
Perfect. And then my other question was on three ninety-five, um, heading north from ninety-eight to the bay, we've always had major traffic issues in terms of speed of driving, and we've had the sheriff show up there and, and give out like seventeen tickets in three days. The question we have is, they're talking about putting a three-way stop where Eden Circle comes, or Eden Drive comes off of three ninety-five, and the county doesn't like to do speed bumps. Can we do, um, I don't even know what you call them, the little bumps?
Rumble strips.
Yes. Can we do rumble strips that do like the song when you hit the right speed limit? And the reason I say that is what we're finding is most people that come down that road, because it's such a long, straight road and it feels like a country road, we get people going as fast as fifty-five, sixty miles an hour. And we have two schools and a church, and we've sent, we have videos of mothers walking carriages down the center of that road every single day. And so, most of the neighbors in that neighborhood are very worried about the safety concerns. And I know they're talking about around Eve Circle or Eve Drive, there's also what they call Dead Man's Curve, which is another spot where cars are doing forty-five, fifty as parents are coming around with, with carriages.
Right. Um, Chance would be able to respond to that, if you don't mind. Thank you.
So, lady was asking the exact same question, so I was standing out there.
Oh.
Answering her. But, um, three ninety-five, yes, uh, it's, it's, uh, we've already had intake meetings. Um, it, it will be out to bid, if it's not out to bid right now, uh, for three ninety-five north from ninety-eight all the way to Tucker Bayou. Uh, it will have a multi-use path on it. There will be a all-way stop condition at Gilmore Road, which is right before the little, uh, uh, Bay Elementary School. And it is also, uh, designed within those plans for there to be a all-way stop condition at Eden Drive. So, um, there, there is no plans for speed bumps or rumble strips at this time. In the event that we have a lot of people running those stop signs, that's when I would want to consider some rumble strips to warn traveling public of an upcoming, changing condition. But I don't want to install rumble strips just simply to try to slow people down. I know Eric said they, they, they can be done to create a song, but not everybody may not want to hear that song. I know we have some roads up in the north end of the county where we do have rumble strips where they are needed, and the adjacent property owners despise them. But, uh, I, I, they, they can be annoying to homes that are right next door.
So, until the stop sign gets in and, and all the other stuff happens, then there's nothing that we're gonna be able to do to...
I don't know if there's any reason, I mean, the road will be under construction, I hope, before the end of the year.
I, I would just, uh, second that motion. Mr. Wright can, can agree with me that, uh, if you want to get, uh, calls increased to your office, have rumble strips put on your roads.
That, that's what I've heard, so, okay.
I didn't, I didn't hear all of Eric's questions, but did that, did that address everything?
Yeah, so, you're saying that, uh, it's planned for this, this fall?
Chan?
That's right, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, Public Works, buddy.
Good afternoon, ladies and commissioners. Uh, I'm gonna be a little shorter than Chance.
You think, you think.
Uh, anyway, uh, we have a request to accept the Public Works Quarterly Report from April to June of twenty-five. I'm gonna just go over this real quickly. First of all, I want to thank all the men and women from Public Works that they're the ones that done this, and they're, they're a pleasure to work with. Uh, as I always say, I got the best job in the county, 'cause there's a lot gets done, and they do it all. So, I want to thank them right here.
Under good leadership, they do. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Uh, but just, uh, by the numbers and just go over a couple of the projects we completed. But, you know, we have a thousand and forty-eight miles of roadway we take care of. Seven-hundred-and-fifty-three of that's paved, and we still have two-hundred-and-eighty-something miles of dirt road. And y'all alluded to that some during the budget process, so working very hard to work on that. It's time-consuming. But we did get, uh, we did get about seven miles paved this, this quarter, the, the last three months. Just run down these numbers. Sixty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-one gallons of diesel is, is what the county purchased and run, and that, that's not just Public Works, anybody else. Sixty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-three gallons of unleaded gasoline. So, that tells you how much is done, how much is, you know, run through these vehicles. Just do the normal daily repairs and keep things up.
Hey, bu- buddy, real quick while you're on that, do, do you have a ballpark on, on how much it costs per linear foot or per, per foot on a road, just off the top of your head?
Well, it...
I'm not gonna hold you to it.
It's kind of apples to apples. If it's a strict resurfacing and we're just laying down new asphalt, uh, you're looking in the neighborhood of one-fifty to one-eighty, one-hundred-and-eighty thousand a mile. If you get into construction, just depending on the nature of the construction, you could get up in the neighborhood of three-fifty to four-hundred thousand. Be a rough ballpark.
Thank you, buddy.
Yes, sir. Nine-hundred-and-twenty-one signs made at our sound shop and put out in the community. Four-hundred-and-ninety-five, uh, fleet maintenance work orders completed this quarter. Two-hundred-and-eighteen driveway, um, permits processed. That's two-hundred-and-eighteen new residents that pulled a driveway permit. Now, subdivisions are not counted in that, so that tells you how much we're growing. And, uh, three, three thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-eight Public Works-related customer service calls. So, you know, we encourage people, if they see issues, call us about them. We, we can't be everywhere at one time, and we certainly don't take offense to you calling us, telling us something's wrong because, you know, we'll get out there quickly as we can and try to, try to, um, correct it. Just to go over a couple of the, uh, projects that we completed. Uh, we completed a resurfacing project on Perkins Roads, one-point-nine-four miles. Uh, Matthews Road, resurfacing, two-point-three-one miles. Uh, we had a small resurfacing project on Bud McBroom Road. Uh, Zaya Drive, uh, that was close to Freeport. Yorkie Road, up north end. Portland Park Road there behind the Dollar General on Highway twenty, we resurfaced that into the, the boat ramp. County Road eight eighty-three, that was in front of the, the Freeport Elementary School. We had some realignment there. Uh, worked with Chance on that, get that done. Then some of the drainage projects with Paxton Senior Center Retention Pond. That's something the board had, you know, asked us to, to help them. We, we got that completed. Uh, Kings Lake Road, uh, cross drain repla- placement. Uh, Pitts Bay Shore, cross drain replacement. Sunset, Sunset Road, uh, cross drain replacement and a drainage improvement there on McCall Dairy Road. Chalk Tal Beach Basketball Courts, we got those resurfaced. Uh, Grady Bound Park, the pylons that went around the, the inlet there, we got all them put in. South Norwood Road sidewalks, that was a project Commissioner, uh, Gleywell brought to the board back last July. And we, and we finally got that done. It looks great if y'all, y'all want to get by there. Morrison Springs, we, we worked with Parks and got the new entrance repaved and got it set up where you can get in there. Lake Sharon, we resurfaced the dam over there. That was a project that, for the neighborhood there that, that, uh, there was some issues on that dam. Bark Park, site, site improvements here at the Bark Park. We, uh, you know, got that re-leveled and got it filled and sodded. New Harmony Loop, that, that was a project we done. It's a bridge approach project we had to do up there. Old Jolly Bay Asphalt Patching, that was, uh, uh, issue there in Freeport. And then, uh, some of the projects we've got on the books right now that we're working for, and I know Commissioner Johns knows well for sure, we're, we're approaching fifty percent on that one, so...
We're thrilled.
It's been a, been a slow go.
It's a lot of work, though.
Yeah, a lot of work.
Yeah.
Alice Beach Drive, or Alice Drive and Beach Drive, that's over east of Defuniac's Drainage Improvement Project. Uh, Carley Court, just south of Defuniac, we just completed a, a major dirt to pave. Wasn't a real big road, but a major drainage improvement project to go along with that dirt to pave. George Montgomery Road, Crooked Creek Road, River Road we're working on now that goes to the new Ronnie Bell Boat Ramp down there at, uh, on the river. Uh, we got, we're resurfacing that. Should be through with that today, probably today tomorrow. John White Road, uh, that's south of town. Cannon Drive up toward Paxton, and William Road's resurfacing. And then, uh, just three other ones, Beaver Dam Road, Beaver Dam Park out in Mosshead. That's in Commissioner Drake's district. We, we just started working on the actual improvements to the park. We fixed the dam and got the water backed up last year. The dam was blowed out. We got it fixed, and they've started the site work at the park now. So, uh, that's been a, something we've been waiting on. And we've got the Tealenville Dam there in Defuniac coming up. We're just waiting on the permits on it. We'll get that done later in the summer. And, uh, the Paxton Medical Center's site work, they've got that building done. I know Commissioner Gleywell knows that. Uh, there's a little bit more site work we gotta do in the parking lot there, but, um, that was a lot of stuff done in the last three months, and we got a lot more to do.
That's a lot.
Awesome job, buddy. Awesome.
Thank y'all for the support.
Thank you for everything and your, and your team. I mean, they all work really hard, and it's hot out there.
Very.
And so, uh, we really appreciate all that you and they do. Thank you.
Appreciate y'all's support.
Amazing what all those cookies do. That's it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board?
Just that Mr. Wright went longer than Chance.
Anyone in the audience want to speak to that? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Motion passes. Thank you.
Next item is item number twenty-two, Kelly Carter. I'm comfortable speaking about this.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Kelly Carter, Director of Tourism Marketing. Per your request at the previous meeting, I have reevaluated and re-scored the applications, and I have determined that they have funding allocations for each event as you requested. These revised figures are included in the packets before you and have also been shared with both you and the council. During the recent council meeting, a recommendation was made to cap the total funding at five-hundred thousand dollars, which we discussed, and after further review and analysis, that revised total allocation comes to approximately five-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars, on a little over. Um, the slight overage was necessary to ensure equitable score based on the score, scoring outcomes and the overall merit of the applications. Additionally, some of the things that we talked about last time, I want to make you aware that we are conducting an internal review of the program in preparation for next fiscal year. The re- review will involve a comprehensive assessment of all the current funding criteria across all levels, community, signature, neighborhood, or experience event, as well as the reimbursement program. And, um, our goal is to improve the clarity, the efficiency, and fairness within the program. Once this internal review is complete, we do plan to host some public workshops to provide some greater transparency and guidelines. And these sessions will explain the purpose of the program to help people understand it a little bit better. We'll also be outlining the best practices for completing the application and provided, and we will provide some detailed insight on the requirements of the marketing plan so that they can make sure that they fill the application out properly and make sure how each, so everyone understands how each component is scored. I'm also looking into the integration of an automated scoring as a potential enhancement. I'm looking at how, uh, the, how it's all scored, and if we can do the automated scoring, um, that will ensure consistency and reduce the administrative burden. And I do believe we'll be able to do that based on, um, what I'm talking about with, um, our advertising agency through our digital agency. So, at this time, it is five-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. We have funded, um, many of the events that have been funded before. Some of them have been taken off. Um, however, I do believe this is very fair and equitable, um, when asked to reduce the budget.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
How many of these events are actually in Oaklusa County?
None of them.
Emerald Coast Theater Company?
It is at Grand Boulevard.
Is it Grand Boulevard?
What about the Symphonia?
Symphonia is held at multiple places throughout South Walton. Um, Alice Beach, Seaside, um, the Hilton, Sand Houston.
But they're, but they're based out of Oaklusa County?
Um, that's, the Sympho- the Symphonia office is actually at Grand Boulevard.
Isn't there one for guests?
Matty Kelly. Is that the one? Matty Kelly has seven events in South Walton, um, and those are the ones that are being funded for Walton County. I actually have those pulled up, 'cause I thought that might be a question. Those are, sorry, take me just a second. Let's read it sideways. We have, uh, three different dinners that are in South Walton, um, that happen at Grand Boulevard. We have a gala and lunch at, for Art Skill that works with Cultural Arts Alliance. We have a mul- we have multiple art rent, reach, arts reach events with works with CAA. And then we have... And then we have, um, The Blue Dog featuring Wendy Rodri, and then also, she goes throughout the county and goes to all the schools and talks to the children about The Blue Dog. And that's all supported through Matty Kelly.
Where is the Destin Charity Wine Auction?
That is an unfortunate name, 'cause it's had that name for twenty-five years. I've begged and begged them to change it. It's actually at Grand Boulevard as well. And it pr- it, um, raises about two million dollars for local children's charities. Yes, sir.
That's a good question. So, i- if we're, we're funding an entity to have dinners for fundraisers for themselves?
It's for children's charities. It's the same as all of it, and we've done it for years, as South Symphonia does. It's an event to come to. It's not just a fundraiser. It's like anything can be an event to come to.
Okay. You don't know what those tickets cost or anything, do you, off the top of your?
Not right off the top of my head, but over a hundred dollars I would, uh, last time I checked, there were, uh, one to two hundred dollars apiece.
Am I correct in seeing that Symphonia, you've got three different entries for Symphonia?
There are three different things, yes, ma'am.
For a total of sixty thousand dollars?
No, ma'am, it's, um, ten thousand, well, I don't think so, um, thirty-five thousand.
Okay, so it's thirty thousand, fifteen thousand, and ten thousand, correct?
Um, Symphonia total is thirty thousand dollars. The Symphonia.
Oh, okay, that's, okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And I know you and I had discussed, uh, Topeka, and, um, the math was incorrect, and it still was at five-ten. So, that one that we talked about, uh, the, uh, Moon Crush, Avet Moon, it is a part of, it is part of what we sent out.
That brings in a lot of people, not only from, from the United States, but also from other countries, all the things that they do over there. So, that's really bringing a lot, as a lot of these other things are as well, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
A lot of them bringing people from all over. Uh, I think my, my thought is, are some of them bringing just local things like?
For the most part, um, there are three different categories for funding. Um, the three categories are what we call a signature event, and it receives the most amount of money, and it has a large presence, and it brings in people of multiple ages. You plan your trip around that. That's Thirty-Eight Songwriters Festival, that's South Walton Food and Wine Festival.
Right.
Um, smaller events that you may plan around would be things like Symphonia, if you wanted to support the arts and those sort of things. If you wanted to come to Baytown Wharf Beer Festival, something like that. And then we have the last, um, we have the last group, and that's five thousand and less. And those are called community events, and those support just what we do here and make the experience better for guests and residents.
Right, right. I think that our concern was, we wanted to make sure that we were funding things in Walton County.
Yes, ma'am. We're, I've never funded anything that's not in Walton County, believe me. Um, and please remember that, um, this is always reimbursable, so if it's not done properly, they don't get the money. So, um, and I'm very particular, as is everyone at, um, Melissa's Place is very particular. And then if they're not as particular as they need to be, the clerk's office is very particular. So, believe me, no one's getting any money they shouldn't have if they did not do it properly.
And then Kelly, is, is part of the reimbursement, we're clear that these events that are held in multiple locations and multiple counties are in fact using the money to market Walton County events?
Yes, yes. Um, I have to see every, um, everything that they do for advertising. It has to come by my department before it's even sent out, and we do that, they don't have to, but we do that so that we don't get down a road where you've spent twenty thousand dollars and none of it's reimbursable, because we've done that before, and I don't care for that. It makes my job hard, and so, uh, um, we, we meet together, we go over their marketing plan, we do everything to ensure that it's all being done correctly. Yes, sir, Mr. Curry?
Uh, you said you're going to, uh, look over the process, uh, for next year. Do you guys already have a category on how many times, um, these particular entities have used this grant process? Like, uh, I don't know, I'm just gonna take one, the Chalk Town Vineyards Winery, we've given them twelve thousand five hundred dollars over the past ten years. Do you have a column that shows?
I can put that together. We haven't in the past. Um, it's always kinda dependent on, um, where leadership was at the time. Some leadership believes that it's good to continue funding them and use the marketing and continue on, but if the program needs to change where, um, it's only being funded for so long, that's in there. But if you look at the way the questions are answered in, under, like, the scoring criteria, you do get less points if, 'cause it's a point-based system. You do get less points if you've had, um, the, uh, if you've had this for more than six years. So, you do get less points. So, if you, it's less than six, you get more points. So, it is a point-based criteria, but that is just to leave room for more people to come in, because there's only so much money.
I just, I just wanna kinda get away from, you know, I mean, these, this is almost like, after eight, nine years getting the same amount, this is almost just like a budget, another budget. We got a, we're, it's more of an entitlement than a grant, because in my mind, a grant i- i- is a crutch or a wheelchair to get you going till you get on your own. But if we continue to, um, you know, sponsor something after fifteen, twenty years with the same amount of money, I mean, it, it, it doesn't, it becomes less of a grant, more of an entitlement, in my mind.
Yes, sir, and if it was true sponsorship, yes, I would say that, and I'd completely agree. And if that's the way, um, this commission and the TDC Council would like to look at it, you can only receive the money for so long. I'm happy to work the program that way. Um, that's why I wanna have some more conversation before we get to next year, before we do this.
I'm just speaking out loud.
Yeah, because there's always opportunity to make it better, but then there's also, when you look at some of these smaller events, um, you know, especially the ones that take place in authentic Walton, um, they're just starting out and trying to get on their feet and trying to understand how to do these things. Maybe some of these larger events m- might not need it as much, but we still get to benefit from the PR and the marketing of having our brand associated with such large-scale events that maybe don't need quite as much money.
The, the, go ahead.
Um, Songwriters Festival, y'all probably been given the, at what?
Since its inception, yes, sir.
Since, since, uh, both inception, and, but, on the other hand, the Songwriters Festival does bring in people.
Yes, sir.
Large numbers of people, and it, it serves the purpose, and I don't think we need to lose sight of the fact of what these things are supposed to do.
Yes, sir.
And they're supposed to help the businesses and, and help, uh, the econo- uh, help the tourism economy. So, I don't have any problem giving money to the Songwriters Festival for, and, and for as long as we need to, as long as they're putting heads in beds.
So, another thing that we've done.
And that's my concern, too.
That's what I was gonna say, too, exactly, is that these, most of these events are bringing a lot of people to our area. They're spending money at the stores, at the restaurants, they're, they're at the hotels or whatever. Um, they're bringing a lot into this area, so I think that it is, we're benefiting a lot more than what it's costing us.
Yes, ma'am, especially when, um, we also ca- work with, um, the research agency down in St. Germain, and we do onsite, um, at, we do onsite research with them. So, for example, this past year, the Thirty-Eight Songwriters Festival, we had, um, a person onsite talking to all those people, and it was a, um, over a four million dollar economic impact back to the county for the twenty thousand dollars that we gave them. So, I would be happy to share some of those reports. We do those on the small ones and the big ones, so that we can show, sometimes it might not be very much money, but, um, the people that come to the event and it's experience, and it makes their experience better.
I, I just think it's, it's probably an impossible ask, unless you guys go down there with a clicker and go, okay, uh, where are you staying at? Okay, there's one, there's two. Um, it would just be nice getting this type of information, other than the applicants telling us how good they're doing. That's like asking a fox how many hens are in the hen house, and we disagree.
So, one of the things that we could do with that is, one of the questions on the criteria is, um, has the, like, for the soundness of the proposed events, when you look at the criteria, um, has an event date being secured? Has an event location been con- uh, secured? And then the third one, has a lodging partner been secured? So, we do, um, I do work with them and try to get them to work with all of our various lodging partners to see if they can put together some packaging to get, try to get some ideas of how many people. It's much easier for a ticketed event than a non-ticketed event, but some of the other ones have worked, that have been the non-ticketed events, have worked with our local lodging partners and said, okay, this is what's going on, and we provide them that information so they can get it out, and they can say, I shared it with everybody that was here this weekend.
I mean, that's great data to have, if we can get.
I can get that, I asked them for that information as well, and they provide that on the back end when they turn in. They have a whole reimbursement wrap-up report they provide, and so, I could show you all some of those as well, so that you could understand what I'm talking about.
Great job. Thank you very much.
Motion to approve.
Um, motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any other conversation up here? Anyone in the audience want to speak to this? Yes, ma'am. I didn't realize it was you sitting back there.
Does anyone see? 'Cause I was late, as usual. Uh, Kelly, you've done a great job.
Please tell her your name.
She knows me forever, Suzanne Harris, okay? And I think everybody in the room does, too, but anyway, I sat by a man, I didn't even know who knew who I was, so I was happy to meet you. On the Destin Wine thing, okay? Uh, Tiffany wasn't able to be here. She came this morning thinking she was gonna get to speak. She wasn't here, and so I got a Xerox page from her, and I'm not, I'm not gonna read about it. I'm only gonna talk about the Destin Wine thing. When they go to Alice Beach, Victoria called me when I left the first meeting. When they go to Alice Beach and Seaside and Rosemary, Alice Beach pays them to come. The homeowners pay them to come. I would rather see us, now, you're talking, you know, we used to have the Matty Kelly Arts Thing here. It used to be at Grand Boulevard. I know, I, I bought paintings from them a lot. Then it moved back to Destin. And their concerts in Destin really don't bring us anything. Their dinner, their fundraiser dinner's about two hundred dollars a ticket per person. Then you go there and you buy a lot of auction items that fundraise for the Symphonia. But nobody that I've ever had a tourist in my building, and I've rented units for forty years, has ever come here for the fundraiser at Symphonia or any of that. I think we have people that we cut, that are local people, that are trying their best to form something to bring people here. And what I would like for y'all to consider is just putting the Symphonia on hold until the next meeting and let Tiffany talk about it, because I really think we turn down people that are really trying to get started. Symphonia is really a Destin thing. Y'all know that, so do I. But really and truly, the, the, all these other people contribute to Symphonia, but all these other people don't contribute to the small new ones, or the ones like the Music Festival. Didn't they get cut, the Songwriters Festival, didn't there, that didn't, 'cause at one time we were gonna cut it. But I just think we need to help locals, and we need to really use this money to help people get started, not for people to have a big fundraiser at the Hilton. Nobody is driving down here to put butts in beds to have a fundraiser at the Hilton. So, I think we've given to them for years and years, and now they're able to get money from Alice Beach and Rosemary Beach and Seaside, and they're getting donations from the Seaside people, they're getting donations from the homeowner thing at Alice Beach. So, I really think, I just, I'm not opposed to the Symphony. I've been to their things. I've been to the Destin, what we call the Destin Wine Charity Auction, and I pay to go to that. But it's all locals when I'm there. Very few people drive in here, except owners that come for that. But I just think we can use that money for the small people that really have their businesses started in Walton County. I don't have a problem with anything else on it, Kelly, but I really do have a problem with, with the charity wine fundraising dinners. I really do have a problem with that. I really think y'all need to look at who got cut, if there are people in Walton County that could use that money, divide it up. If there are people that were in here last year, that their budgets got cut, give them more money.
Thank you. Kelly, Kelly, would you, I have a question for Kelly. There are several on this list that are small.
Yes, ma'am.
That didn't get mo- that didn't get any mon- and that's where I was headed, is, oh, it, I don't think it's appropriate for us to give Walton tax money to Ocaloosa events.
Right.
Or, or, I remember several years ago, we were trying to buy a piece of property over on the west end of, um, Miramar and the, well, I wasn't gonna name it, but, but, uh, the excuse, one of the major excuses to not buy that property was, is that anything we put there would bleed over into Ocaloosa County. So, I, I find, uh, I mean, if we're, if we can't buy property that's gonna help Walton County because of bleed over, I think giving money to Ocaloosa Events by the truckload is just not appropriate. And I think, I, there are events on that list that didn't get any money that are Walton County events and could've got that, could've gotten some money, but no, we're sending it to Ocaloosa County, even if the event itself is in Walton County. And I don't, I don't like that, and, um, I would amend the motion to, uh, deduct the Symphonia, uh, stuff if, if Mr. Curry will go along with it.
Yep, I'll, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to remove the funding for Symphonia.
And to give that money to the people who didn't get any money.
Well, some of them don't, are some of them on here ones that just simply don't qualify for what this is?
So, there's a couple that, um, you know, when you look at what they put in for their application, it might not be considered an event. Um, something such as Summit on the Circle that happens in the Funiac, that's more of a group meeting. Um, and some people don't always understand, um, the difference between an event that you come to and maybe hosting a group. Um, I'm happy to pull these out. Um, I can assure you, nothing that I've ever given money to takes place in Ocaloosa County. Um, the Destin Charity Wine Auction Foundation, um, that does take place at Grand Boulevard. That's just been their name for twenty years. Um, Symphonia is, um, there's three events. It's the Symphonia, um, actually, there's two. Symphonia Gulf Coast and then Christiane Doe, which are two large events that they do. So, I, if you would like for me to pull those, um, one is Christiane Doe at, um, sorry, it's very small, and I don't have glasses on. Uh, fifteen thousand dollars, and then, um, the, the season. I'm good, I can see it now. No, I can see it. Um, and then the other one is like seventy-five hundred, and then, um, so I can pull all of those and resend that out if we wanna do that.
The, the Writers Conference?
The Longleaf Writers Conference? Yes, sir. It's more of a conference. It's not really bringing people into an event.
But, but conferences bring people in. I mean, it, it doesn't have to be fun and games to bring people to put them in a.
So, one of the things that, um, the way the application reads is, it's gotta be an event open to anyone. It can't be like you have to be part of something to come to it, so that would be something that could qualify under what Karen does, Director of Sales.
What about the Turkey Trot?
It's just a little small event, and I was just trying to make the money go as far as I could. So, I, I can reevaluate some of these and, um, pull that out, or we can move forward, however you would like for me to do.
Or you can just remove the two that.
Yes, sir.
Recommended and leave the rest as is.
Okay, whatever you would like me to do.
Well, I, I, I don't wanna cut the money, but I do think the money needs to be spent in Walton County, or, or on some of these things. Maybe the Turkey Trot is small, but, you know, it might not stay small if we give them some money.
Okay.
And I'm sure, I don't remember the ones in the north end, but there's probably some up there, too.
Yes, sir.
So, let's, I would say, let's, I agree with the fact that we need to spend money on people who are starting out and trying to, to expand in Walton County, rather than to, um, give it to somebody.
Okay, and based on that, um, I, you just want me to remove Symphonia or the other two as well?
Am I, I'm looking, it looks like there's only seven on here that weren't funded.
Yes, ma'am.
Total, that didn't fit the criteria.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Um, and they could fit the criteria if their marketing plan was a little bit better, or maybe they told me what they were gonna do with the money, but sometimes that's why, um, when I put together, like, how we can help them fill out the application better, they might could do a better job of that, and that may, could be possibly why they did not receive some money.
Well, and, and to Ms. Harris's point, um, I think, um, some of these people are just starting out. And when you're just starting out and you're trying to do a lot of different things with a limited number of volunteers, sometimes you don't know how to fill. I would, I'd be willing to bet you that the, uh, people at the, um, Songwriters Festival know how to fill out the application.
Yes, sir.
I mean, they're, and they, so they get ninety fours on their score.
Yes, sir.
But some of these other people may not know, and they may be the ones that would be the more, uh, worthy beneficiary of, of our limited resources to help them.
Okay.
So, I'm just saying, I think the reevaluation you were talking about would help, but I, I don't wanna, I would rather see that money spent in Walton County on new, new, new things.
Why don't we, why don't we make the motion that, yeah, as I understand it, you're eliminating the funding to. you're eliminating the funding to the Symphonia events. Why don't, as part of that, you task staff with reallocating that funding to events that qualify under their metrics, that are new events or that are, and any such event has to be a Walton County-based event. That way, if they don't honestly have one, or somebody can't justify it or prove it, we're not just giving the money away for nothing. But it gives staff a chance to make that discretion. That's a much smaller amount you're giving them discretion over than the dollar.
I'm saying the motion to that.
And I'll second. Just a question, do you have establishment dates in here? Like, I don't know, Dan's Wine Walk, I would put in there, established in-
Yes, sir, as part of the-
So what I was getting at, can we look at the ones that are, you know, maybe less than three years old?
Yes, sir.
Or four years old?
Yes, sir.
To help them out a little more?
As part of it, it says, when, when was this event inception? So it tells you how long it's-
Smaller, smaller groups.
It smells, it's for every single one. And there's also, just so you guys are aware, I'm sorry, there is also different criteria for, obviously, a brand-new event has different criteria than an established event, because I can't force them to show overnight if they've never had the event before. So as Commissioner Gladwell, you know, I sent you the two different criteria sheets. So there are some, there are some anomalies in it that make it where it's not so heads in beds, 'cause if you've never had an event, you don't know if it's gonna put heads in bed yet, and you can't prove that. Yes.
I appreciate all your hard work, and I don't mean to be giving you a hard time.
No, you're fine. I'm happy to do whatever you guys want. And I just, like I said, this is, I've been doing this program, well, I created the program. So I'm always happy to see the program grow, and I'm always happy to see, you know, the, the program benefit as many people as possible in the right way.
Thank you.
Can we, I mean, what's the motion? I mean, can we go ahead and do what, the amount minus the, the money for Symphonia? And then you come back to us at a later time if you find some of the other ones that can-
The, the motion actually, well, actually, the motion is giving them the discretion to reallocate the Symphonia dollars at the staff level to new events that are hosted in Walton County that meet all the necessary criteria to be hosted, so it does not actually have to come back to you.
And it doesn't necessarily is on this list already, correct?
Oh, no, I would assume it would need to be on this list, correct? They would, it would have to be part of who apply, who the applicants were.
A couple of them that didn't receive funding on, like, like the Chautauqua, they've received funding in several other categories, but just not in a couple that apparently didn't qualify.
Well, again, it was one of those things, there was only so much money to go around, and I just tried to make it the most useful.
So we're basically gonna just reapportion a small percentage of the total amount?
And that's-
To, to some of those or all of those that are not?
I will see how I can put it around. And then, just so I'm clear, Matty Kelly, we want that one, or it's, it's okay to say, and Destin Charity Wine Auction is okay to say, or do you want me to reevaluate?
So the motion is as to Symphonia unless the board-
It's just Symphonia.
Just Symphonia?
That's all that's in the motion.
Okay.
If they can change it, if they won't, but.
I think I've changed it four times.
You can do whatever you like. I'll make it happen, I promise.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board, any other? Okay, any from the audience? Yes, ma'am. You, please come up to the board, to the podium.
I guess the, the, the-
Are y'all making a motion to give Matty Kelly money, but Matty Kelly has all their stuff in Destin?
That would be the effect of the motion, yes.
No, we shouldn't be giving them, for the Matty Kelly Arts Center, Arts Festival that is always on Mother's Day. It's in Okaloosa County. It is not here. And the Matty Kelly-
I believe Ms. Carter can address. She's say, she's shaking her head no.
There's specific events, Miss Harris, that they apply for.
What were they? 'Cause I don't think we should give Matty Kelly anything.
Well, here's the, here's the metric, here's the metric that we're overlooking, is that, what are we, what is the intended purpose of making that investment? Is, are we investing in our local economy? Are we serving as a charity? And I think that what most everyone is, their expectation is that we're getting out of the picking winners and losers, and, and out of the charity model, and more into the investment model. So even at the TDC meeting, when this originally surfaced, it, it's been chaos from, from the get-go. You'd have a list, things that could, that would, that would come out, and then you'd bring it to a board, and then the board would say, no, 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 my project didn't get in, or this project got in, so let's take it back, and let's re, and now we're doing the same thing. We're, you know, we're trying to pick those winners and losers. The, the metric, back to where I was going with this, is I wanna understand what that dollar is doing. Is it going towards capturing a new audience? Is it going to maintain an existing audience of people that normally wouldn't be here? Otherwise, why does the program exist? If we're paying our own people, and the same people, over and over to, to attend this event, then there's no tangible benefit that exists, or that it would be created. So unless you're pulling from an audience that would not come to that event without us investing in that, and that we're going to lose that audience, then there's, you know, it's incumbent upon us to try to, try to fill that gap. Otherwise, we'll see, you know, an economic loss. But I, but I, I don't, to me, it's not when it was established, or if it's small, if it's large. It's, are we achieving the intended metric of capturing resources, economic resources, that normally would not be spent here in the county? And that's what we have, I think, in my opinion, that's more of the, the, the answer that we have to, that we have to ascertain.
Right, I agree with you, that the 38 Songwriter, for instance, those people come specifically for that event. That's, that's why they come. And a lot of the, like Luke Combs and things, the Topeka things, they come specifically for those events. They wouldn't be here otherwise.
I get that.
Yeah. But there are some to your-
But I would, I would be interested, I, I would be interested to know in, originally, what was the audience at Song, at 38 Songwriters Festival? The, the visitation rate, was it, was it 100,000 people that came? Was it, you know, 50,000 people that came at its original inception? When we hit the peak, where are we at now? And then who is that audience? Is it people that live here in Walton County? Or is it people that are traveling from Colorado, or from Nashville, or from?
And even other countries, some of them.
But I wanna know who that is.
You wanna talk before me, Danny?
You can go ahead.
She just got a message from somebody that says she felt like she was in Jurassic Park. So obviously, this meeting sounds like we're in Jurassic Park. But the Vintner's Wine Dinner at Vintage. Three Vintner Wine Dinners at Vintage. I go to the Wine Dinners at Vintage. I pay and I go, all right? And they're not cheap. But everybody there are locals. We're the locals that go. I've been going to them forever.
That's my point.
So that's part of what y'all are leaving in. That's why I came up here. And the other thing y'all are living, leaving in is, I don't know about the Bourbon Blue Dog Festival at Churchill Oaks, but that's a subdivision, right?
Yes, ma'am, but it's an event that they do. Wendy Roderick comes in, and they do all that, and then I-
Is it open to the public?
Yes, ma'am, everything is open to the-
Okay, all right, well, that one probably is all right. Live music from the Songwriters Festival, I, you know, but the Art Guild Lunch Gala and Performance, that's a fundraiser. And the things at Vintage are, to Vintage, they, they, it makes the restaurant money. But it's locals going to it. I think we should alloc, just me, I think we should reallocate all the money to things that are benefiting some of these people that are trying to start out and make their little bitty things big. Or maybe we cut somebody that we, we didn't give as much money to this year that's been burying in the stuff, and add it back to them. That's just mine.
Well, I think, I agree with Commissioner Drake. The, the purpose of this should be to put, to help our businesses, to put heads in beds. It is not a giveaway program, 'cause we can't afford giveaway programs.
No, sir.
So I won't, and so I, I'd, I'd be willing to cut Matty Kelly if that's, if that's the tru, I mean, if that's the way it is. And I don't even remember what the other one was, but I don't wanna fund that either. What I wanna fund is things like the Songwriters Festival that bring in people.
Okay, so let me say this then. How about I remove Destin Charity Wine Auction, I remove Matty Kelly Arts, and I remove Symphonia? That would free up quite a few dollars there. Those are larger events. I could go back and look at that and reallocate that as Ms. Radkis and said. And, one second, just so that everyone knows, it, Commissioner Drake, they have to advertise outside of Okaloosa, Walton, and Bay County, and we tell them where they should advertise. It's not that they just do whatever.
Okay, and I wanted to ask you.
Yes, ma'am.
Was the other one that Ms. Harris mentioned, the Wine Dinners, which one is that on the list?
So there's three of those. So Symphonia has Wine Dinners, Destin Charity Wine Auction has Wine Dinners, and Matty Kelly has Wine Dinners. Those are the, that's not the only thing they do, that's just part of what they do.
Those will be eliminated by the motion deal with the three you addressed.
Yes.
And you're gonna reallocate the money?
I will reallocate that money. I will look at everybody who received money, and see if there's anyone that should've received more money, and then I will spread the money out through the other people that deserve it.
If there's some that, that should've got money and didn't.
Yes, sir, I certainly will.
Just, but with the criteria that they bring people in, whether it's five people out of 15, or whether it's 15, 5,000 out of 15,000.
But how are we measuring that?
Well, it's hard, that's hard, that's the hard part.
We ask the applicant.
Because we can't, we can't justify spending a whole bunch of money on doing customer surveys on all this stuff.
The larger ones that get the most amount of money can show ticket sales, and they can show that they come from somewhere else. The, the smaller ones that cannot show the ticket sales, they're typically receiving less than $10,000 or less. The ones that are receiving $15,000 to $20,000 have ticket sales, and I can tie that back to zip codes where they came from, and they typically have lodging associated with them.
But I would, I, I don't see where it's on here, but I would be willing to bet the, the Styx Concert is gonna bring people in. I'd be willing to bet you Luke Combs' thing will bring people in.
Yes, sir.
I mean, those, those kind of events bring people in. And that's what we want, so you, you'll take care of that.
I certainly will, yes, sir.
And you bring it back to us.
I, I will, I will go ahead and do it all, and-
It's coming back. No, she then needs to bring it back to you based on where we are, so.
Okay.
So if you withdraw your motion and withdraw your second, we'll let her bring it back.
All right. You're gonna see me one more time.
I'm not making a sixth one.
How much time, how much time do we have to make this decision?
Melissa?
Uh, till, uh, till the end of the fiscal year.
Why don't, why don't we send, why don't we kick it back down to the TDC, at the TDC level, and let the board re-scrub this from, from a policy standpoint? And that gives us time to dig in on what it actually is that we're trying to capture, what it is that we want to accomplish, and how we meet those goals? Can we meet those goals? And then bring something, 'cause I feel like this whole thing just needs, the process needs to be cleaned up, restructured, dismantled, started over, and, and fixed. We're, we're patching in, let's take this one out, let's take this one out. But we don't even know what our, what it is that we're trying to accomplish. Is it, I mean, I think that would be, and then it gives the industry people, the ones that are making the contributions day in and day out, that live and work in that arena, it gives the TDC Council an opportunity to lend their expertise in trying to get this thing fixed. I mean, we talked about it at kind of a 40,000-foot level a while back, but it, it kinda moved on before, and I think everyone kinda acknowledged that it needed to be restructured. If we have plenty of time, then why don't we do that?
So I, it's not that, and I'm perfect-
I agree, I agree with what Commissioner Drake just said. And I think that our goal initially was to keep it in Walton, to make sure that we're only providing money to people that are Walton County, you know, businesses, et cetera. So we'll, we'll keep it there, and then we'll just restructure it. The motion's gone, the second's gone, so just to Commissioner Drake's point, scrub it, and let's look at it again.
So can we get it at the TDC level?
Well, the TDC's meeting at the start of August, so yes, you'll have a TDC meeting between now and when it could even come back to the board, so it's very possible.
Do I need to make that in the form of a motion?
No, sir.
Okay.
You understand the direction to go to the TDC?
Yes, sir, I do.
So no motion, that-
No motion, so no comment.
They can do the TDC.
No comments, no motion, there's no motion. You can say, you can speak at public comments at the end.
They can talk to the TDC as well.
Or at the TDC as well. Okay.
Thank you so much, sorry.
Sorry about that, y'all.
All right, so first item, I have item 23's request to approve and schedule and advertise a public hearing and consider revisions of the county administrator ordinance that will conform with what we anticipate the proposed contract to be. You should have contracts back per your prior directive on the county administrator, and as well for the county attorney at your next meeting. So we will likely do an ordinance adoption at the following meeting to make sure they are all in conformity to one another. So I just need a motion to approve the scheduling.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Item 24 is actually gonna contain four motions. I apologize if anybody went to the trouble of printing out all 174 pages of this items, 'cause there are multiple approvals. But I will sum it up very easily. This is the final franchise transfer and approval of debt issuance to Florida Community Service Corps, which is Regional Utilities, for their acquisition of the Inlet Beach Water System franchise area and system as a whole. So the first motion I am meeting from the board would be a motion to approve the resolution that authorizes them to proceed with the issuance of water and sewer revenue bonds.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Anyone in the audience care to speak to this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next item will be a motion to approve the amended and restated franchise agreement.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board?
Can, can you give us a close notes version on if there's any changes to that?
There are no substantive changes to the Regional Utilities franchise agreement from what they already have, other than the expansion into the Inlet Beach Water System franchise area. This is saying they now encompass what was Inlet Beach.
Anyone in the audience care to speak to that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item is going to be a request to approve the amended and restated Management Administration and Operation Service Agreement, which is what the county has an effect with Florida Community Service Corps, DBA Regional Utilities, for the operation of system services in Walton County. Once again, this would expand to reflect the new service area.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion, second. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Fourth motion would be a request for me to approve, to schedule and advertise a public hearing for the adoption of an amended ordinance, which would clean up all of the regional utility ordinances in the existing ordinance to Inlet Beach franchise, to put all this in ordinance form at your next board meeting.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone in the audience care to speak to this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You also have the other one.
Yes, Madam Chair, item 25 is a public hearing. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. First item is a public hearing's request to consider a resolution abandoning a portion of that alleyway identified in Walton County Platt Book 2, Page 66A. This is the one you have heard now for the third time dealing with the Glendale Platt Alley abandonment. Need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the abandonment.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Somebody.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
In light, yes, ma'am. I'm about to talk about item 26, Madam Clerk, I promise you. So item 26 would've been a request to consider an ordinance that would've codified the positions of the CFO and the Office of the County Attorney into ordinance. In light of our action on item 23 and the bringback of those contracts, I'm asking that this item be continued to your second meeting in August so that those can be done in conformity. be done in conformity. Those will all amend the same chapter of the code. This will avoid, if any contractual language is addressed at your next board meeting, the need to once again re-advertise and go through the process yet again. So, for consistency, I would request a continuance to the second meeting in the month of August, which for declaration purpose, we will declare to be August twenty-six at one P.M. in South Walton, twenty twenty-five.
Motion to continue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue. Any comment from the audience? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I know we jumped into public hearings, Madam Chair, but I do wanna talk about my add-on. I just need permission from the board to schedule an executive session to have an attorney-client session under two eighty-six point oh-one-one, subbed by the Florida statute concerning Florida TP versus Walton County. My intention would be, and I think we're gonna be a little tight to do it this Thursday, and I understand Thursday may not be the most opportune day, but we will do it before your next board meeting. So, we may be even looking for a thirty-minute one-off meeting in the next ten to fifteen days.
Okay.
Can I have a motion? Thank you.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any comments from the audience?
What is the, uh, what is the timeline? There, there's something, and stop me if I can't discuss it, but there was, there was a motion to dismiss, I believe, that was pending before...
That hearing was canceled. It would've been this afternoon, actually. The motion was canceled by agreement, um, based on what's occurred. I'll be glad to talk to you after the meeting about that. A case management conference was still held at the judge's request, but the judge had independently set that. Uh, but this would be looking at bringing this matter to a resolution.
Did you want to speak to this topic?
Think he probably wants to be on the Regional Utilities, but...
Madam Chairman, thank you. My name is Will Dunaway, and I represent, uh, Regional Utilities. Out of an abundant of caution, Mr. Atkins, I just wanted to point out, in section five of the resolution which the board passed, it does authorize, um, both the amended and restated franchise agreement and the first supplement, uh, to the amended and restated franchise agreement.
That is correct. Those are both approved as whole, as part of the resolution, but the two separate documents were standalone documents that required board approval based on prior board actions. The supplement does not. That is included in the resolution in their packet.
Thank you, and we do appreciate, um, it was, it was a long time in getting here, and we appreciate all the board's support, and especially Mr. Atkinson's support throughout this whole process. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We have a motion.
Twenty-plus?
Long time. But we do have a motion and a second for the, um...
Executive session.
Executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And I just wanna note that for once, I just got through over five items quicker than Chance, Buddy, or Kelly. So, I clawed back my time slowly.
Okay, let's see. Vice Chair, hurry.
Is Mr. Chance available? Hope that company might come back up here. He says you're on your own. Uh, I've had several meetings at the, uh, Chalktaw Beach Community, and since the, uh, the fire station has now moved to their new building, um, we've had several meetings, again, at the, uh, at the community center, asking the folks there what, what they would like for this area to look at, or look to be in the future. And, um, Chance and Anna came to the final meeting, um, I think it was two weeks ago, and it was unanimous that they would love to have this ADA accessible fishing pier with a kayak, kayak launch area. Um, uh, and another item, I'm gonna try and move some, uh, plat fees to rehab the old fire station, be it AC unit, be it, um, you know, whatever it needs inside there. But, but this particular motion right here is for the pier, and if Chance would like to explain the cost, since I'm asking for, um, five hundred thousand dollars out of the managed vending, uh, coffer, uh, if you could kind of explain how that money would be spent with, um, this particular project?
Yes, Chance Powell with Engineering. It was identified that, that these dollars would only be, uh, available to the boardwalk and access only. Um, the reason for the cost, it's only a hundred and sixty feet long, extending out into Chautauqua Bay, but it would be ADA accessible. It, it is considered that, uh, it would be constructed, uh, very similar to a dune walkover that the TDC builds along the beachfront, stainless hardware, composite deck boards, uh, handrails along each side as required through the permitting process, um, for ADA accessibility. Um, I talked with Brian about it and compared some of the costs per square foot that they have on the dune walkovers of, of, uh, on the beachfront, and five hundred thousand was a general number, uh, based on the square footage of that proposed option.
And if there was any, um, funding left over, I would be glad to throw that back into that coffer if there was anything, you know, if, if we went under budget by any chance, then that money could go back into that, uh, managed chair or managed beach vending coffer.
Does this include the, um, driveway?
No. I'm gonna try and work that with my plat fees.
Well, you got my plat fees, no, you...
Well, that's, I don't have a whole lot, but, um, um, a, and...
I couldn't build an outside wall.
The, uh, don't make me laugh, not gonna. But the consensus from the community there, this would also benefit Villa Tasso, uh, which is right down the road. Um, there, there's nothing really in District One, um, other than some pocket parks, other than the Chalktaw Beach Park, which is, um, in outstanding condition now. Um, thank you to Public Works and Brad and all them for that. But most of my parks are, are pocket parks, um, probably less than, less than most people's backyard. Oh, that's, that's a shining star, but, um, in this, this area, these folks don't have anywhere to go to. So, I figured this would be a nice, um, addition to that area, especially once the community center, senior center, whatever the folks wanna use the old fire station for. Um, I also suggested, um, that part of the, uh, the fire engine bays, one of them be put as a, um, sheriff's substation. Uh, we have a lot of speeding problems there, so it'd be nice to see a, a deputy's car sitting there, um, maybe just slow some folks down, and, and I gotta get with the sheriff with that, but I think they're on board with that. Um, but this, again, this is just for, um, this, this fishing pier.
A motion?
I, I'd like to have that as a motion, if I could.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to take five hundred thousand dollars out of the beach vendor, um, funds for a fishing pier.
I would like to explain, too, that, that this coffer, when we first brought it up, um, I, I thought it was a good idea to spread that amongst the county, since that is, you know, public land, uh, public access, that this money's being made off of. So, you know, that's why, you know, the, the couple meetings back, I had suggested, and, and Commissioner Gladwell accepted with the Ag Center. I think the next, um, money amount needs to go down to the south, be it at, um, at the senior center, or whatever the case may be.
I think that the board should've been able to have an opportunity to discuss, you know, where that money was gonna go. My, my feeling, I was just curious, is there any other, any other pocket of money that could fulfill this need? Is there any? Because I know there's...
Well, I didn't wanna take it out of general fund. I didn't wanna take it out of...
No, 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 there's some other...
I didn't wanna take it out of anything. This, this was unanticipated funds.
There, there's, how much? Two seventy-five in one fund, believe?
That's the amount that's going in there next year. I think there is a little bit left for playground equipment in this year.
Is it two seventy-five?
It's not two seventy-five left, it's one hundred something. And if the board would ever, we're at the point in the year where we could look and see where we could find other funding that could go for this, if the board, if it was the board's wishes.
I mean, do you, is there any that you're aware of, other than, because I thought there was two seventy-five in that one?
That's how it started this year, and that's the amount that's going to be in there that was in the budget presentation. Um, let me look real quick, and I can tell you, I think it's one hundred seventy-five that's left in there this year. But there is...
Are there any other pockets of money that you're avail, that you're aware of?
Most likely, as I go through, I can put some together, because we're at the point during the year, especially with capital items, where we can see what they came in at, and if there's anything left over, we can put that together.
Would you be willing to look at that?
Well, I mean, I just, I mean, that's a whole lot of work, that we could use that money for something, something else, when we know that this, this money is available. It's not, it's not being taken out of the general fund. It's not, um, off of property taxes. It's not off of, this is, this is money made from a public access. When we, when we first brought this up, we said, well, I know I mentioned it, and I can bring back the meeting, I thought this would be a great idea, a, as like a, a one Walton thing, to where this would be a great coffer to spread out amongst the county, because, uh, between you and Tony, you guys have a little over two million dollars in red plat fees. These two together might have about five bucks.
Oh, my God.
And I got about a hundred grand.
He's got more than that. He's finally coming up.
Commissioner Drake's got four of that five dollars.
All right, so that's why I was just saying, it could be spread out amongst the county, just that coffer, without affecting the general fund, without affecting any ad liborium, property taxes, anything like that. This is just like a, a feel-good Walton County talk.
Well, we're talking about affecting any of those ad liborium, ad liborium, or any of that kinda money. I'm talking about that, I'm talking about other pockets of money that we have that are sitting there that are available for that kinda use that have not been used. That's what I'm talking about.
I mean, it's technically not playground equipment, but it's, I guess it's... I'm sorry.
We're discussing the, uh, funds for this project, where they might be able to come from, if there are other opportunities, other areas that the money might be able to come from. We're just trying to determine which would be a good place to look, because we have some different pockets of money that would be able to be used for this. We just don't know exactly what we have and where. So, I was, I was hoping that we would be able to go out and look to see what we had in other areas, but the motion on the floor is to use the five hundred thousand out of the beach vendor money, and we have a second. So, it's a conversation on that. Is there any other comments from the board? Any? Okay.
I would say, um, you know, there, there's always, um, some disturbance about, um, south versus north. This is a nice little project that, uh, would help the western side of twenty, and it coming out of what's thought to be beach money, might, um, give people some, uh, calls to love each other a little bit more.
Well, I was just looking to see if there was other, other options, other places where the money is, but that's fine.
Well, and the rest of it, I'm gonna try and work with it, like my next item, you'll see, I'm gonna try and work with my plat fees to do everything else at this place.
That's totally different, yeah. That's totally different. Um, Mr. Drake, what did you want to say?
Do we wanna put together a policy on how we, how we use that po, pocket of money?
I think we do need to work on that, because if it's gonna be going on for years, I think we need to come up with some sort of, of plan on, you know, what we're gonna do, how we're gonna split it up, or whatever, that sort of thing. I, I think we should, but...
Um, Mr. Corman would like to see that used in, um, his department, and I asked him yesterday, did he have a heart attack, when we started talking about spending this money? He assured me he, he was healthy.
Okay. Was there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this? Yes.
Well, there's room. Well, it was crowded, but I got here. Suzanne Harris, Florida. Y'all, when this money first came available, okay? We were only getting three hundred thousand, and there was all kinda discussion, and people didn't wanna change beach vendors, that was a horrible thing to do, we need to stay with the three hundred, instead of upping it to a million, three. So, we're making a million dollars extra. And, and I've discussed with, this with Donna, we just agree to disagree. But the beach accesses, the public beach accesses are here, so that Dufuniac and Paxton and everybody north of this bay has a beach to go to. And with the customary use mess we've got, some of them are having a hard time even getting a place to go to the beach. This money belongs to everybody, and I personally think this fishing pier, uh, I've been to Chalktaw Beach, but I think that Chalktaw Beach needs stuff. And when it first came about, I remember Dan saying, and I'm not just supporting Dan, but I remember him saying, you know, we should rat hole that three hundred thousand that we thought that we'd get every year, that we should've been getting more for, 'cause we didn't bid it out, but that's a different subject. So, we should rat hole that for what we've been using it for. And the rest of it should be used for things to support all the citizens. And if we don't take care of the people in the north end, they don't get plat fees. They don't have, and Dan gets a few. But Dufuniac and all of them don't get, Danny doesn't have any plat fee money, Brad doesn't have any plat fee money. We've gotta help everybody through this, and I think that's a real asset. And Dan, I wish you could cut the pier back a little bit, but I don't like piers out in the water. But I think this money, we've got to either, y'all get a plan for next year on how to spend it. But this year, I think that we oughta spend it on, on doing something good for the people north of the bay. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Okay, just wanna say, you know, we also are paying for beach stewards and stuff like that to be down at the beach, you know, which is different. So, um, there's, there's just a lot going on down there, a lot. So, anyway, with that being said, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Um... Pardon me? Do we do? No, we're getting ready.
Just notice next.
Uh, so twenty-eight. And is Chance still here? There he is. You get bonus time, Chance.
All right.
Um, this is the, the, basically the last step at the Chalktaw Beach Park, um, that we've already, um, you know, it's beautiful now. I don't know if you guys have been out there yet, you need to go visit it. But, uh, my worry is the splash pad and, um, the area where folks sit down and eat and all that stuff, and have their little picnic, it needs a guardrail. Um, people fly by there. We, we were out there with Lieutenant Window and some other, um, deputies when we were doing the murals, and it didn't matter that there was four cop cars in the parking lot, people were just flying. Um, I, I'm just, I'm just, my concern is the safety aspect of the splash pad and the people that are enjoying the swing sets and all that stuff. And, uh, I got with Chance, there's already, um, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, about eighty thousand set aside there, and this guardrail would run the length of the area that we're, uh, talking about. Um, so if you wanna explain the guardrail a little bit more, Chance?
Yeah, you... So, there was a previous plan put together at that park that included some parking, included some stormwater improvements for that parking, um, also included a concrete separator, uh, that would, that would divide the parking from the travel lanes. That was all permitted through DOT, um, and now I guess the, the plan is to, to not build all that parking, but still provide that protection to the park that that concrete separator would have provided. Uh, I've had a brief discussion with DOT and the permitting office, and they, they would And now I guess the, the plan is to, to not build all that parking, but still provide that protection to the park that that concrete separator would have provided. I've, I've had a brief discussion with DOT and the permitting office, and they, they would permit a guard rail as long as it met DOT specifications and clear zone requirements from the travel lanes of, of Highway 20. So we, we put together a cost, concept of that and, and plan. It's around $30,000 for that, we, we anticipate. However, that might change once we get direction and move forward permitting through DOT, but I think it's gonna be pretty, pretty close to that.
Okay. And then I would take the, the balance remaining, whatever Chance doesn't use, and put that funding down at the old fire station for any rehab work. So that's, that's my motion.
So the motion is to spend your, your plat fees on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we are referring to community center, not, it's going to be a community center, not a fire station?
Well, yeah, though, I don't, I don't know what we wanna name it at this point. We wanna name it a, a community center, senior center.
I just wanna be clear, we're not spending it on a fire station, so the record's clear.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes.
How about the county building? Because...
Okay, county building.
Hey, that worked, I just wanted to clarify on the rest.
Because there could be some opportunities in the future for like tax collector and things like that to use that building.
Polling station.
And I already wanna put a substation in there, so. Okay, county building.
We have a motion and a second? We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? I just wanna say, I, I think that that's great, safety is paramount, especially when you're talking about kids and that close to the road, so I'm glad to see that you're putting that rail in there.
Thank you.
So, and I also think that you should be able to use your plat fees anyway you need to. Any comments from the audience on this? Anyone wanna speak to this? No? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, two for two. All right, the dreaded 29.
Oh.
I wanted to, I, I've been getting lots of phone calls about this bill, and then associated with our new, newest policy with taking quasi to the magistrate, and how the SB's gonna affect that and vice versa. So I wanted to bring this up again for discussion and also ask Mr. Atkinson, what, what options we have to, I don't wanna say the word battle, but what can we do in opposition to change the aspect of no, no impact fees, you know, basically Tallahassee gave us all just a rubber stamp, you know, when it comes to development now. So what, what options do we have? Can we write something? Can we ask for a, an AG opinion? You know, 'cause second opinions are always good, 'cause I wouldn't be here with a foot right now if I didn't go out and get a second opinion. So I'm asking for your, or, or direction.
I believe your best bet to address this is to work through your lobbyists and work with our legislative delegation to find opportunities in session, which starts early next year in January, to attempt to find carve-outs, exceptions, or some lessening of the broad reach of the bill. The simple reality is the bill is incredibly broad in nature, and because of the breadth of counties, covers every county in the state, it captures a lot more than perhaps what was initially intended. I think a lot of counties are figuring this out, so I would recommend we work with our lobbyists and the Association of Counties, certainly with League of Cities as well, 'cause it affects all municipalities too, to try to find a less burdensome version of this bill that can be achieved through legislative amendment next year. We can certainly go to the Attorney General, but the bill is very clear on its face, and that's the problem. It is absolutely unequivocally clear that we are unable to make changes that are more burdensome or restrictive to our land development process, starting August 1 of the last year. The bill has a retroactive application. It has the plain effect, I know all of you have received numerous comments about hold off on doing anything. There's no holding off on doing anything. The bill, on its face, declares any ordinance adopted, if you are covered by it, which we are, null and the magical words are void ab initio. Void ab initio means it was void ad s inception, it means it never happened. We aren't able to keep our impact fees, that's why we've gotta give 'em back. We never legally had a fee in place when we collected them. Because this doesn't just pause it, it doesn't just stop it, it sets it all, it sets back every ordinance, it wipes them out as though they never existed to start with. So certainly looking at the ability to obtain proof that these were not targeted at disaster circumstances, that may allow us to reenact ordinances would be one option. Looking for exception out of it, looking for exception out of the three-year window of repose where ordinance, where we're not able to make these changes are all things we can look at targeting. I know county staff's already begun speaking to our lobbyist about it. Certainly know numerous other counties and cities in the state are looking at the exact same process. Frankly, I don't see that when you add an ongoing land development amendment process going on for your code, why that would be offensive to the concept of not making changes that were targeted at post-storm reconstruction. So perhaps there's some language that can support that, but that would be what my recommendation to the board is. I have not seen any valid legal challenges being brought at this time to 180. It is certainly within the legislature's plain authority to enact a legislation of this nature, certainly dealing with disaster declarations. As it relates to the magistrate process...
Good.
Yes, sir?
Ask a question before we get to the magistrate stuff. First of all, Orange County is challenging it, but they've got a lot more resources than we do. But as, as regards the two neighborhood plans, 'cause most of the emails I'm getting are about those two plans.
Same here.
What would be the, if we didn't, do, are they still in effect, or do, do we, would
we have to repeal them, A? And B, if we refuse to repeal them, what would be the monetary and legislative impacts of that refusal?
One, they are not in effect, they are null and void ab initio by plain language of the Florida Legislature.
So they don't count anymore?
Correct. So my position is repeal them because there's no reason to leave it on the books and somebody to come back in 25 years from now and say, "Well, this is still on the books, why didn't somebody repeal it 25 years ago?" And another board subs hearing of those guys back then didn't know what they were doing. So the right thing to do is repeal it. Secondly, as to Seagrove, I'll be very blunt. We are under threat of litigation prior to Senate Bill 180 passing from one of the owners who was included in it over their objection for Harris Act claims. In speaking to that attorney, prior to the last board meeting where I discussed this, I did advise that if they would be so kind as to wait for our first meeting in July, that not to send us the 14-day notice that was likely gonna be triggered July 1 when the governor, when the bill became effective, that we would address it with the board level. I can tell you right now, if the board says today, "We think we wanna enforce that plan", we will have a 14-day notice under Senate Bill 180 to repeal that ordinance, and we'll be calling a special meeting, 'cause your next meeting is more than 14 days out to repeal it, or you'll be paying them for their property, you'll be paying them for their damages, you'll be paying them for their legal fees, and their initial claim of Burt Harris isn't gonna be closed, and they're gonna get to do exactly what they want on their property because that ordinance is void ab initio. It never existed. And they don't have to prove that we stopped them from doing something like Burt Harris does. They merely have to show we chose to leave it on the books after they told us it affects us taking off. So I would suggest to you that we have substantial exposure as it pertains to the Seagrove Neighborhood Plan. While we have not received a similar threat from the Point Washington Neighborhood Plan, what I would tell you is, it's null and void ab initio. If the legislature provides us additional ability to come back, we can reenact it in a matter of 10 days' notice, as was written and presented, if we choose to do so, if the legislature gives us that exception. But candidly, I don't believe in flaunting the legislature's plain declaration that all of these ordinances are invalidated on their face. And secondly, as to Orange County's challenge, what I will say is, yes, they are challenging it. But to my point about a valid legal challenge that accepts us out from under this, there is not injunctive relief that has been granted that exempts them from that process. So until we see somebody get injunctive relief that declares this unconstitutional, overbroad, vague, or otherwise, to allow it not to have statewide application, until we see that come out, that's not gonna be the case. I'm not gonna weigh in, in a public meeting, on some of Orange County's claims. I would simply note, there's not been a class filed on this, nor has the Association of Counties or League of Cities attempted to start that process as part of the immediate challenge either. It may well happen, but we sit here on July 22 with a legislative session that will kick in in January, the likelihood that we can get through full legal proceedings on a state constitutional law challenge to a state statute that was enacted on July 1 before the legislature has more ti, has the opportunity to reenact it, is not very good. I'm more than happy to go argue to the First District Court of Appeal, Florida Supreme Court, or anywhere else you send me. I enjoy it, but I don't know that I find it to be a good use of taxpayer dollars, nor do I believe it prudent when we have already had positive feedback, as have many local governments around the state, from their legislative delegations about the extent that this bill reached beyond the intent of the bill. I think we have a very good opportunity. But if you're the one who's suing the Florida Legislature, you have to pick, do you wanna work with them or do you fight with them? That's my recommendation, is that you don't start the fight with them right now, because in reality, we have very limited, very limited numbers of bills that were affected by this.
So do we have...
I got, I'll cut just a couple. So do we have insurance coverage if we, if we've sued?
As of now, no, there's no indication we would. It's a challenge that we're bringing on our own.
And what would be the ballpark figure of what that would cost us to have a constitutional challenge against the Florida Legislature?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars at the short side, especially if you have to add the governor in, and if they choose to fight you back. It's not what you choose to do, it's what they choose to do in defense.
It could cost millions.
If you go to the Florida, if you go to the First District Court of Appeal and the Florida Supreme Court, or if there's a federal injunctive relief that you get drawn into because it's kicked under a federal question, because Orange County or somebody you're consolidated with does, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And we don't have that. Unless you wanna stop funding other projects, no, sir, I don't suspect you do based on today's budget workshop.
So, so at this point, with neighborhood plans and developers or development to come up here, we're in the shut up and color mode?
Absolutely not. I wanna be very clear, absolutely not. Senate Bill 180 does not pertain to your ability to approve or deny projects. Your existing land development codes exist, your comp plan exists, you can enforce those. If a project was due to be approved under your land development code, of course, you still have the same legal obligation you always did, approve it. If a project is not due to be approved, you have the legal obligation to deny it. If it is a legislative determination on a request for a rezoning, you are fully permitted to hear those matters. 180 does not apply to applications made by a private party that is the owner of land. So they can choose to go either way, and if they're asking to change their rights, that is not imposing a more burdensome restriction on them, they already have rights, you're just not giving them the approval. 180 is not designed to bar that. It's barred, it's designed to bar you as the government from writing new laws that restrict development in your county. That's what it pinches us on. As to the magistrate process, there has to be a quasi judicial proceeding either way, whether it's before this board or before anyone else. It is not a more burdensome or restrictive process. Certainly, we will be very attentive, should anyone seek to say they don't wanna go to that process? But to date, I've yet to hear anyone assert that they don't want to avail themselves of that process, because it's the same exact process they were going through before, it's just whether it's heard before you or heard before the magistrate.
But if you have somebody up at the podium and, and you know they're putting in a development that's in a dangerous area, we can't, we can't deny that for that because there's no impact fees coming from them to help that.
You can't deny, you cannot deny a project based on impact fees or not as it is right now.
Well, I'm, I'm stating for safety reasons, I don't care.
If, if it is a...
Name a crossroad and they're putting 5,000 units in there, and you know that that intersection can't handle that, it's a safety aspect.
I, I would imagine in your scenario, the 5,000 units would be akin to a large-scale amendment, in which case that would be a legislative determination, and if you find, based on record evidence before you, that that's in danger to the general health, safety, or welfare of the public, then you could deny it. Yes, sir?
Only legislative, though, when it comes to quasi, it's...
Well, quasi, you have to have competent, substantial evidence that it fails to comply with the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. If all the evidence before you says this complies with traffic, complies with the safety elements of our Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, any overlay districts or zoning districts, unfortunately, if you are presented with those issues, you'll be required to approve those, and that has absolutely nothing to do with 180. That is the law as it has existed in the state of Florida for over 50 years. However, what I would say to you is, always, you sit, so if you were hearing it, just like the ALJ who hears this with DOW will ask these questions, if you, the board's always had the ability to sit here and quasi judicial and ask questions, you do every meeting. I don't think I've sat through a QJ where somebody didn't ask a question unless it was a plat approval. With that being said, you have the right to go ask, "Staff, I've got a concern. How does this not affect traffic adversely? Does this require turn lane?" Won't talk about, I mean, we got litigation where we're required to turn lane on a project right now that we are doing all we can to defend. How much information your staff gives you to support or deny your decision is what is going to be the strength and weakness of your case in that regard. But I want to be very clear, 180 did not take away this board's ability to adjudicate these projects one way or the other, and doesn't affect the magistrate's ability to apply our existing Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan to applications that come before it. They are seeking changes, that's not subject to 180. What you can't do is now add an element to your Land Development Code or Comprehensive Plan that says, "The board deems that any development over 5,000 units is per se a traffic hazard on the following roadways and can't be approved." You can't do that under 180 right now.
And we can't rezone anything right now.
You can absolutely rezone if somebody asks you to.
No, we, like with the DPZ stuff and everything else like that, we, we can't do anything.
You can't change your zoning districts, that is true. You cannot change your zoning districts, that is accurate, nor can the county petition to rezone, or nor can the county unilaterally rezone someone's their proper, property. I will tell you, before Senate Bill 180, if the county basically said, "We wanna repaint part of our map," we'd have had an uphill battle doing that to start with. That gets very dicey when you're changing someone's rights, just under the existing laws of the Harris Act. One of the large challenges that I suspect, without venturing too far in Orange County's case, but that you'll see other local governments that may take this argument, is that there was not a need for 180 because acts such as the Burt J. Harris Act and other provisions of Florida law already provided adequate protection against in-process project, in-process changes to laws and policies that would inhibit development. You've heard me say that up here before. If a project's in the hopper, you can't change the rules on a midstream. So that is one of the challenges that exist. It appears this was more targeted to governments that took a very quick act to address redevelopment or reconstruction in storm damaged areas that would have limited the redevelopment opportunities in those areas. Now, I, I'm not gonna speak to those, 'cause we didn't do that up here. It may have been very prudent based on what they did, it may have been exactly what the legislative record indicates was issued, the direct targeting of certain development patterns or developers. That'll be between other places, I'm glad it's not between us, 'cause we didn't have to do any of that.
So what are we doing at this, at this point? You said that we're getting with our lobbyists. Is there letters going out? Is there phone calls being made? What, what is the process to, what, what are we doing? What are, what is our next step?
I, I would tell the board members, we need to, I would ask each of you to set up a meeting with our county lobbyist to discuss your concerns, let them advise you of the conversations they've had with our legislative delegates. I don't know that today would be an appropriate time for me to discuss any conversations I may or may not have had at this point, out of respect for those elected officials. I will simply say, your legislative delegation is aware of the concern that this part of the world, specifically Walton County, has, and we'll let Ms. Horton and her lobbying firm certainly get with each of the board members and discuss that and come up with an absolutely comprehensive plan to address our issues.
Very concerning. Very concerning, because to your point earlier, there are a lot of people that we have heard from with the neighborhoods that have gone through all that time and all that work to get their neighborhood plan, and this bill is just, we're, it's causing obviously a lot of issues. And so there's a lot of things that I don't think that we're even sure what we can and can't do, but...
I, I will say with, at least the Point Washington Neighborhood Plan, while I stand by my position that repeal is appropriate to avoid someone coming in and dropping a short notice challenge on you, based on the lack of opposition we have heard post-adoption, if they get everybody that owns a piece of property subject to it to sign on, we can reenact that without any headache whatsoever, because they've asked us to. And we could do that even now without legislative change. I can assure you, that's not gonna be the case in Seagrove.
Right, right.
So that will be an opportunity, and I've spoken to planning, planning, admin, finance, myself, had a very lengthy meeting Friday morning of last week discussing all of these issues. We are looking at this very carefully about what we have to do. We have a number of other changes we have to address under 1080 and 784, dealing with expedited development order approvals we are now required to engage in, as well as plat approvals, you were gonna be speaking about that in the last meeting. So we are on top of this, we are working forward with it, but we can certainly get with the concerned proponents from those plans if they would like to have conversations with staff about how they could possibly work to save and preserve all that work. It is not our intention to undo the work, but we do have to follow the state law.
Thank you. Okay.
Clear as mud, sir, thank you.
We are, I'm, I'm gonna ask...
Unfortunately done my job as an attorney, and I lost all the time I got back.
I'm gonna ask you to hold off on comments. Let me get through these next two items, they're not gonna be very long, and then you can bring that up at, at public comments, if that's okay. Okay. Commissioner Anderson's item has already come before the board, and that's already gone, so Commissioner Gliwell, did you wanna say anything?
No, I don't want to.
Commissioner Drake, did you wanna say anything? Okay, I just have a couple small things. One of them is, the area right between this building and the chamber building, there's a large piece of con, large piece of concrete out there that's, you know, I think the signs like, "Stay off, don't roller skate" or whatever on there. And, and there's bricks, brick pavers on both sides, so, that are kinda broken up and everything, so what we're doing is hoping the, well, I believe Brad Alfred's office has already started working on the bricks to make sure that they're safe and all of that. But what I'd like to ask is that we add, there's one picnic table out there that's kinda pulled over into the leaves, so I was hoping we could get five more picnic tables like that that match it, get the, the brick pavers fixed, and then get some shade over that, so the people that work here can go out there and eat or take a break, and the people that come to these meetings, if you want to take a break or something, you can also go out there and sit at the tables, have somewhere to be. So the price that I've gotten so far on just the brick paver... So, um, the price that I've gotten so far on just the brick pavers and then the turf of that really kind of hideous piece of concrete out there um, is thirty-seven thousand dollars, but that does not include the shade. So I'm not sure what the shade would cost, but I think, Brian, did you kind of have a ballpark for what you thought that might be?
Depends on, you know, the supports and the amount of shade you want. I would suggest, you know, just put it in a dollar figure to not to exceed of maybe a hundred K for all in.
Okay.
And that'll probably get you, uh, what you're going to like out there.
Is, is that something that the funds that I was talking about earlier would be able to be used for?
Yes, ma'am. We would be able to, to put that together.
So there's, there's funds sitting there that can be used for that, but I need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. And, uh, any comments from the audience on that? Any comments from the board? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
We'll put Mr. Alfred on.
Okay, um, the other thing that I wanted to bring up and, and Brian, I kind of want you to help with this as well. Um, I asked to consider a potential contract for consulting or management services in our planning department. We've had a lot of people leave the planning department in the last year. A lot of knowledge has gone, uh, thirty years with Renee Bradley and, and several other people. And there's a, that's a lot of work that goes on in there. They take tons and tons of phone calls. They've got so much development going on, so it is an extremely busy office. And, um, I didn't realize it, but in, uh, uh, twenty twenty-two, I believe it was, there was a, uh, report done on that office and there are some things that were identified. And I think we need to work towards those, um, going back and, and working those problems that were, that were identified that haven't been corrected yet. And it's not anybody's fault, anything like that. It's just an overwhelmingly busy office. And I think that when we look at the changes that, uh, that were identified that needed to be done, um, it would be helpful in, in addition to our audit, not in place of our audit because we still have, I believe the RFP out for the audit. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. It is. We had one response as of yesterday, so we went ahead. And there were a few questions that had been asked, so to get some more responses, we extended it through Thursday and I've got those questions answered.
We only had one response?
We had one. We looked, well, there's several that have downloaded it and are looking at it, so I do anticipate some more.
Okay, okay, okay. So this is not in place of that audit because we do feel like we need that. This is in addition to the audit, maybe bringing someone in to be a consultant that would be able to kind of, uh, help identify any things, make things a little easier and that sort of thing. So that's what, that's what I'm looking at. Do you have any input on that, Brian?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so I asked, uh, Stephen to take a look at that old report that was done a few years ago. And, uh, I'd like to work with him over the next month or bring back something to you, to, to the board, uh, two meetings from now with a report of, of, of what, what was in the, the, that study, what was implemented, uh, and give Stephen a chance to address that. And then, um, we've already done a few things to help the immediate problems. Uh, Terry Franksman in HR Department, uh, put some temporary help in there just for the basic processing of applications. Uh, but I think it would be, uh, uh, beneficial to all concerned if the county commissioners would take an opportunity to read that report, allow Stephen Schoen to put together a basic, um, uh, report of the assessment to let us know what exactly what was in it and what was done. And then we can build on that. I mean, I think we all understand that there are some things that can be fixed in that department or be done better. Uh, Stephen has, uh, been with the department for, for quite a while and he's now in a new seat. I think we should give him the, 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 uh, opportunity to, to have a little bit of time to, to, to demonstrate to us a, an understanding of, uh, alleged deficiencies and develop a plan to help overcome those. And I feel like that previous report probably will have some of the same issues that we are, uh, uh, being told of now.
Yes.
What, what report was that? Was that, um?
It's done in twenty twenty-two, I believe. So I'll make sure you each have a copy of it, uh, this afternoon or first thing in the morning. Uh, then like I say, we'll, uh, plan to come back in two meetings from now.
Okay.
That'll give me time to sit down with Stephen and company, um, to better understand it myself. Uh, and also give him, you know, uh, an opportunity to demonstrate that he understands and show us what was implemented, what was not, why it was not. Uh, and I think maybe we can, uh, start to knock off some of the issues.
Good.
If we don't feel at that time that that's enough, um, a consultant to come in is, is not a bad idea. But let's give Mr. Schoen, uh, an opportunity.
Okay, okay. I, I, he's saying let's, um, let's give Mr. Schoen an opportunity to kind of work these things and, and that's perfectly fine. And if he feels, if you, Stephen, did, did you want to speak to this at all? You're welcome to if you like. Okay, okay. Um, so if you feel like that you need somebody in there, then we'll work in that direction. If you feel like you don't, then, you know, we'll, we'll work with that. But it's just that we know every, you know, that planning is a big job. It's a lot going on in there and we want to help any way we can to kind of streamline things for not only your office, but for the public. So that's all I wanted to go. No motion or anything for that. So with that being said, public comments. Yes, sir.
Eric Zalace, A-R-I-X-Z-A-L-A-C-E. Um, I just wanted to talk about the SB one eighty. Um, so we've been doing, since this all came up, we've been doing a lot of research and talking to legal counsel. And one thing that we came across, um, in the last week, was so basically as we understand it, there's two sections of SB one eighty that affect Walton County specifically in our ability to keep these ordinances or have to appeal them or are they immediately appealed. And I just want to read the first paragraph of section eighteen. So it's section eighteen and section twenty-eight that really affected us. And in section eighteen, the first paragraph, it's talking about the restrictions on county or municipal regulations after a hurricane. It says, as used in this section, the term impacted local government means a county listed in a federal disaster declaration located entirely or partially within one hundred miles of the track of a storm declared to be a hurricane by the National Hurricane Center while the storm was categorized as a hurricane or a municipality was located within such a county. And then it goes on to say, for one year after hurricane makes landfall, an impacted local government may not propose or adopt. And then it goes into saying things like more restrictive or burdensome amendments, comprehensive plans, et cetera. The most important word in that first paragraph is track, the definition of what is a hurricane track. And so we went and did an extensive, um, search on Florida case law to see if there was any case law revealing, um, precedent where hurricane track was defined by case law. And what we found was there was no precedent where it was defined in land use or administrative law, but in practice, the term is understood as the National Hurricane Center's published definition, which is a line or series of points showing the hurricane's center position over time. That's critical, the center position over time. And so when you look at the legal use, usage in laws like SB one eighty, using the term is assuming the meteorological meaning because there is no case law defining what the hurricane track is. And using the meteorological meaning, basically you're deferring to the National Hurricane Center's definition of what a track is, which is a line or series of points showing the hurricane's center position over time. The reason I bring this up is when SB one eighty, uh, restricts actions within one hundred miles of the hurricane track, it return, it refers to the official path of the hurricane center um, as recorded by the National Hurricane Center. It does not include the storm's outer bands or impact zones. And we, uh, went and reviewed the National Hurricane Center's official reports and tracks for the two thousand twenty-four Atlantic hurricane season. And it appears that none of the hurricanes declared in twenty twenty-four had a track within one hundred miles of Walton County, Florida, even when they were over water. Um, we were able to take, based on the NHC's best track data from twenty twenty-four season and the geographic location of Walton County. You can go to NOAA's NHC, H-U-R-D-A-T, two site and you can look at the IBTR ACS database tracks and they show you the center points. They're taken every six hours as the storm travels, which is what gives you the center point of the hurricane and creates what they consider the legal definition of a track. So looking at the three hurricanes that actually came across Florida, Hurricane Debbie, August fifth, twenty twenty-four, made landfall near Steinhatchee, Florida, approximately a hundred and forty miles from east Walton County. So it never, never fit that category of Walton County was within that one hundred miles. Um, post-track landfall, once it hit land and traveled, it continued east and never came within the hundred miles of the storm track. Um, Hurricane Helene, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, landfall location near Perry, Florida, approximately a hundred and twenty miles east of Walton County. Post-landfall track, the storm's center moved northeast, remaining east of Walton County. Walton County was not within one hundred miles of the storm's track. Hurricane Milton, October ninth, twenty twenty-four, landfall location near Siesta Key, Florida, approximately a hundred and sixty miles southeast of Walton County. Post-landfall track, the storm's center moved northeast, staying well east of Walton County. And Walton County was not within one hundred miles of the storm's track. So based on the NHC base, best track data from twenty twenty-four.
I need you, and to ask you to wrap it up. You've done it over your time.
Season and geographic location, you can assess based on the tracking data, which is on NHC's site. That tracking data determining what a hurricane track is, is the center point. When you take that and overlay with the Walton County's overlay, there's never a point where that track, the legal definition of a hurricane track was within one hundred miles, came close, but none of them actually included Walton County in that, that definition of an impacted, uh, community.
Thank you.
So we, we supposit that it's, we're not an impacted local government, so there is no legal standing for somebody to take action against the county.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
And I'll be glad to address those comments. But let's let any, let's let anybody else that wants to get up and talk about it. I'll give a very succinct answer to that.
Hey, good afternoon, commissioners. My name's George Salamone. Uh, spoke with you guys. We, we are the property that's taking this to court. Um, so regardless of what happened with the, um, Senate bill, um, we were going to get this into federal court. And the way it was going to go to federal court, my parents-
So, sir, if we're going to talk about litigation, we can't. I've talked to your attorney. I know I've talked to members of your family. But suffice to say, yes, I mean, I think-
Okay.
We'll, we'll accept the, um, letter-
Yes, sir.
Into the record and I will accept, um, notice that you are requesting we repeal the ordinance within fourteen days based on that communication. Is that acceptable?
Uh, yes, sir. That, that is definitely acceptable. Uh, but, you know, we, we did want to get the letter into record and, uh, if y'all don't want to read-
Madam Court, Madam Court, do you have a copy?
Um.
Sounds good. It's part of our record.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. It's S-A-L-A-M-O-N-E. Yes, ma'am.
Hello.
Afternoon. My name is Lisa Fleming. I've lived in Old Seagrove about seven or eight months a year for the last seven years. I am a retired lawyer, um, about forty-one years of experience, which is a scary number for me to say out loud. Um, I retired as a chief legal officer of a large publicly traded company and have done a lot of work on state and federal regulation. And with all due respect to the county attorney, because lawyers can reasonably agree to disagree, I want to say that I concur with him. The statute is very, very clear. I disagree with the conclusion that SB one eighty applies to Walton County at all. Section twenty-eight is very clear with the August retroactive date that it only applies to counties listed in the federal declaration of disaster. I looked at the FEMA maps myself, unless they're wrong and I would be happy to be corrected. Walton County was not a disaster area in Debbie, Helene or Milton.
They are a disaster area, P-A-B and D-R four eight oh six under Debbie. And I'd be glad to meet with you if you'd like to see it afterwards, but we've researched that as well. We are within the Florida disaster declaration as of nine twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. FEMA forty-eight oh six, D-R Walton County is listed as public assistance categories A through G. Um, and that is available on FEMA.gov.
So it's public assistance, but is it?
We are a listed county, yes.
Okay.
The entire state was listed in the Debbie map for what it's worth.
Okay, under the, the federal disaster declaration?
Actually, um, Indian River, St. Lucie, Martin, Palm Beach, Broward, Miami Dade. And I cannot see if Monroe was or was, no, Monroe was included. Uh, the ones that I listed there, the six, were no designation provided. Everybody else was a designated county.
Okay, um, but just under two fifty, two four twenty-two, Walton County would not be included. The key word there isn't around the track of the storm. It's the word or the plain English language.
But we, we don't agree, we don't disagree, ma'am. Let me go ahead and interject. I don't, I don't suggest that there is any guidance that would put Walton County under the impacted language under section eighteen.
Okay.
I don't believe the track language is clear. I believe that will probably offer any local government that is seeking challenge under that opportunity to address void for vagueness and a constitutional challenge there. Uh, however, section twenty-eight omits the track language and that is the problem.
Okay.
And section twenty-eight is the section that very plainly declares the adopted, um, comp plan amendment, land development regulation or procedure that is more restrictive or burdensome, null and void ab initio. And that is the problem, is the section twenty-eight is a broader application. There is certainly plenty of discussion of whether that was intended to be a savings clause, so to speak, of a bill to provide this additional prohibition. Or not, it appears that is the case. Um, but unfortunately, at the end of the day, we know the bill applies and it is not my recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners that in light of the prior declaration and now the, when you're here today, you've been asked to repeal this. Um, if you don't take action under that, we're just giving somebody a free lawsuit, in my opinion.
I would encourage you to continue to discuss seeking an AG opinion because it is overbroad and I would agree that it's very unclear, including under section twenty-eight.
An AG opinion is not binding in any court of law of this state, nor is it binding on us. And if we choose to take action under an AG opinion and refuse to repeal this, I can assure you, a judge is going to tell you, the Attorney General does not set the law of the state of Florida. They only offer interpretation. And if a judge disagrees with the AG opinion, who judges are not bound by the Attorney General's opinion, we may have an AG opinion that looks very nice and we may have a very large judgment against us. I do not, I want to be very candid. Since this came out and I first started looking at this in great detail almost three months ago now, I've had numerous clients, this has been a problem for. This is absolutely a direct impingement on home rule authority and our ability to make decisions, especially for a county that did not get impacted by one of these storms in any appreciable way. But the intent of the bill, as it worked its way through the legislature, became broader and broader. And unfortunately, and I do agree completely with the gentleman's statements before. By the way, I've talked to one of his attorneys very specifically, who called me about this exact issue that they spoke with. And our conversation, which I believe he indicated to them when they reached out to him, was the problem is section twenty-eight and the language null and void ab initio. The null part, you can just kind of ignore. It's the fact they wiped all of these off the books by the plain action. And it doesn't say you have to be a section eighteen county. It just literally says each county listed in one of those. And on the FEMA public website, designated counties is part of a publicly available map for forty-eight oh six. And Walton County is a designated county. If you're Indian River, St. Lucie, Martin, Palm Beach, Broward or Miami Dade, you aren't under forty-eight oh six. Ultimately, the very simple reality is this. I gave you my mon, admonitions about the neighborhood planning process and the issues in the Burt Harris Act when we heard them. Um, now this is an even more powerful tool. And even if Senate Bill one eighty doesn't exist, I do candidly believe we'd probably get a six-month pre-suit notice under the existing Burt Harris law. So my prior position stands, the board's prior action to state that these would not be enforced, I believe complied with Senate Bill one eighty. We will be bringing back the repealers of those. I believe you are legally compliant with the legislative action. And I certainly hope our efforts in the legislature to provide us some relief and allow us to go back and reenact these to those persons that would not be adversely affected is something that the county can look to in the future. And we will be very careful about how we go back to that process.
Thank you very much.
Is there any kind of cost for an AG opinion? I mean, just to have a peace of mind?
Just the cost of writing it and ask, but I consider and tell you right now, with litigation pending, it is unlikely the AG is going to weigh in with the challenge initiated by Orange County. But if you want to, but, but Commissioner, I want to be very clear. The people asking you not to enforce this are not going to pay the bill when you're sued by the Salamones. And as your counsel, I am not going to sit here and put this county in jeopardy of a lawsuit when it is, when it is so blatantly clear, excuse me, when it is so blatantly clear that the Salamones did not ask for the Seagrove plan to be adopted. clear that the Salamone's did not ask for the Seagrove Plan to be adopted. The Seagrove Plan restricts their property beyond what they had the right to do prior to August one, twenty twenty-four. Even if they don't fall under one eighty, we talked about at the time, there were potential claims. The problem we have, we have a fourteen-day window to take action. I think Salamone's would acknowledge that we've already given, and he's nodding out there, I appreciate that, sir, that we've already acknowledged we won't enforce it. If we attempt to enforce it, that's where we have a problem. The challenge of the neighborhood plans, quite frankly, is not on every property that's signed on to it. They can have the neighborhood plan on their properties. It's the people who did not initiate it, who were the non-initiating owners are now provided additional protection and remedy under this. And so if the board wants us to go about it, that's fine, but I would tell you my position is you should absolutely not seek to enforce any of these while we ask, do we fall subject to the Disaster Declaration covered? But I will say the legislative history that the Florida Legislature talked about at the House and Senate level made it very clear the entire state of Florida was covered by this.
Yeah, I was told they crafted this to make make it cover every county.
Really?
That's the express language that was on the board.
He said that.
He said they crafted it to make sure it covered every county, is what he heard.
The legislative history is very clear to that point. That's why there are two separate sections.
Lee.
Very unfortunate, Bill.
Oh.
That Sunday was standing there.
Oh, I didn't.
Lee Moore, M O O R E. This is about Senate Bill one eighty as well, but from a little different perspective. As you're preparing to go to the legislature next year, if, in fact, it does end up playing out the way Mr. Atkinson is saying that it does apply to Walton County, I would just encourage you, there was a lot of talk this morning in the budget workshop about taxpayer money, and there has been a tremendous amount of taxpayer money spent on all of the ordinances that have been put in place during the clawback period, is what I call it, of this bill and that are currently in process that are now going to stop. That's a massive waste of taxpayer money. And if you include the the payments we've made to consultants that have been involved in this and staff time, which is even hard to value, don't even think about the the amount of time that citizens have put into this process, developers, whomever else, you up here, that we can't put dollar figures on those, but it's meaningful. But even just looking at the dollar figures of taxpayer money that has been spent, that's one of the most upsetting things to me about the bill, in addition to the fact that it is so such an overreach and so broad beyond what the supposed intent of the bill was. So I would just encourage you to focus on that as you prepare your lobbyists and you prepare your own, you know, whatever it is that everybody's going to do, representing us, the people, to take that into consideration and bring it up because it's really important.
I think we all agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I I wasn't aware that you were wanting to talk, but did you want to speak?
Well, Miss Sunday comes up, I'll add in that the timeliness of the revision to allow for that is critical to not allow any of the efforts we've made and the monies we've spent to become stale dated and non-applicable moving forward.
Right. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Joyce Sunday, S U N D A Y. My view is very simple. Anything that we as citizens or the board can do to save our neighborhood plans is very, it's personal to me. I personally do not live in the neighborhood plan of Point Washington. My family does. We enacted the plan in response to the Oaks of Eden, a development that came in and called themselves the Oak City and cut down every oak tree on the property. They said they'd save them. They sold the property to D.R. Horton, and D.R. Horton, in the middle of the night, came and cleared out all the oaks. Not six months ago, we had a developer coming in wanting to build a mini Hammock Bay across from Bay Elementary School. Due to the restrictions of the neighborhood plan, he gave up, or at least we think we gave up.
Okay.
We hear out in the community that the next thing that our developers want is to develop Point Washington. People may agree, disagree with me, Point Washington is the crown jewel of South Walton. It's one of the last places that is natural, beautiful, and we're not about types of houses. We're about density. And anything, I just feel, I've, in the time that this takes to work through, I just fear what will happen in the meantime while there is no restriction.
The good news is your original neighborhood plan still stays in effect. The entire neighborhood plan is not set aside, Miss Sunday. It is only the revision that occurred after of August of last year, the original plan stays in full force and effect.
Okay, that's good to know. But anything.
It is only the most recent revision that would have, that was undone by the application of one eighty. Your original neighborhood plan is still in full force and effect, and we as a county, to your point, Commissioner Curry, absolutely can apply that plan to oversee development that occurs in that area.
Right, because that's that's why I fear is, you know, while we're hatching this out, they're going to pounce. And we can't, we can't undo whatever they do.
Right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Stradkis, and that also means that.
Or, sir, I'm sorry.
The rating plan stays in effect too, right?
Every single neighborhood plan that was adopted prior to August one, twenty twenty-four is still in full force and effect.
Hello.
Hi. My name is John Bacane, thirty-nine Live Oak Street. Couple of questions about the management process of this one eighty issue. First, the county attorney has basically said he'd be happy if told to to go plead the case. I'm just curious if Mr. Atkinson has pled a case in front of the state or federal Supreme Courts in regards to constitutionality of state legislation.
I've never argued a U.S. Supreme Court case. I've also never had the opportunity of, or I've handled numerous constitutional challenges, have various levels of state and local cases on various issues, be it the District Courts of Appeal, the Eleventh Circuit, or otherwise.
Thank you. Second question is, so far, we've heard the two terms rescind or repeal the Old Seagrove Neighborhood Plan. Is there a third opportunity, and I would like for the board to really consider this, is there a ability to suspend enforcement, thereby taking away any standing of a plaintiff?
That that is what the board did.
Well.
The board didn't rescind. The board suspended enforcement at its last meeting of all of these ordinances until it could be repealed.
Okay, so we won't have our neighborhood planned repealed or rescinded only enforcement stayed?
It is my recommendation, it is my recommendation to repeal the plan because we now have a notice from Salamone's that requires us to take action to repeal.
Do they have standing if there is no damage?
Absolutely. And they don't actually have to be, standing is conveyed under this bill to any citizen, any member of the public. They don't even have to be a property owner. Anybody in the whole county could come in and make this notice on any of these plans.
They can make the notice, but does it require repeal to satisfy?
Yes.
As opposed to not enforcement?
Absolutely. That the specific language is the governing body of the county or municipality is no longer subject to fees, costs, and damages. If they withdraw the proposal, which were past proposal, or in the case of an adopted moratorium, comprehensive plan amendment, land development regulation, or procedure, we notice intent to appeal within fourteen days after receipt of notice. We did that in advance of receipt of notice, and thereafter repeals that within fourteen days. So it's a fourteen plus fourteen timeframe. We are required to do that, and the language very says, a resident of or the owner of a business in a county or a municipality may bring a civil action for deck relief, and they may provide us the notice. So, and that goes back through the notice. So anybody can bring it. I would assert that at this point in time, we have received a notice. We were told this was coming beforehand, but this letter right here, on behalf of Pat and Nell Salamone, make it abundantly clear that we are on notice to take action. We've complied with the first fourteen. We will now take the remaining step of repeal to comply. And since we're not enforcing it anyway, nothing would stop the board from re-adopting it without going back through the full neighborhood planning process if we are given the opportunity to do so in the future. This is not another two-year process if that's what we want to do. It may not apply to their property.
Is that the intent of the board?
The intent of the board is to get to comply with statute.
No, no, no. If if those statutes, if that one eighty is either stayed or repealed or otherwise changed, allowing our plan, is it the intention of the county commissioners to reinstate those public overlays of that plan?
We, I believe, would need an opportunity to sit down and look at everything. I don't think anyone's ready. This is not supposed to be a question and answer session.
Understand.
But we, you know, we certainly want to do the right thing. I can tell you that.
I think it's fair to say the board would not make them go through another two-year process.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. If that was your question, yes, absolutely. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. No, I didn't know your hand was up. I was reaching to the leg in the back, but that's okay. That's okay. Either one, it doesn't matter.
And for what it's worth, this will all be subject to a public hearing when the repeal is brought before you. So we can hear it today, but at the public hearing, it's a different.
Hello.
Hello. Good afternoon. Thank you for your time. I have a question.
Can you state your name, please?
I'm sorry. Nancy Parker. I'm a resident here in Freeport, Florida. Some of you know me as working with the Protect the Emerald Coast Alliance here in the area. In regards to the countywide watershed master plan that was approved summarily today under the consent items, I have a question as to whether or not there will be some planned meetings going forward for the community or, you know, response as we move along in time and in planning for additional input or materials that would aid everyone in working with this document. While it was, you know, the F A U document really was a, you know, over three thousand page and a wonderful general overview and and thing to work from, I do believe there's very pertinent additional information that might aid everyone that works in this area in addressing specific issues that we are dealing with in the county and region. Specifically involving, you know, reservoirs being very important infrastructures, there was really not a lot of, I don't believe, information or detail about that and how that would might be a necessary part of what we need to really look into moving forward. Also, you know, while it touched on the aquifer geology, I really think there was kind of a major oversight in not having a very detailed report about that and access for all the decision makers and and planners moving forward to have full information on on that aspect as well. So I just, I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to amend, revise, or add support materials to that to make it a more detailed document as opposed to kind of like a helicopter overview.
Right, right. Well, what I would like to recommend is if you would give Mary over here your your contact information, and then Melinda Gates, she would be able to get with you and discuss that with you in detail.
Okay.
Would that be all right?
Yes, thank you so much. Yes, as you're well aware, you know, our organization did recently have a public forum to educate the public on our Florida and aquifer.
Yes.
And understanding that water flow and how it pertains to very specific and critical issues that we're all right now facing.
Very important.
I believe would be very important information to for us all to address.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for what you're doing, too, is we really appreciate it, much needed. So thank you. But I believe that Melinda will be able to explain what's going on and what the county is doing in that aspect.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Tabitha?
Ms. Howard?
Tabitha Howard, H I W A R D. Yeah, at the beginning of the meeting, actually, I wanted to ask you something, Clay.
This is not a question, it's not a question and answer. You could just state.
Yes, well, it happened so quickly and the thing with Tony and it flipped so quick, I had no idea that the consent agenda was already voted on. So I actually wanted to come up prior to that, because item number five, it was a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign Amendment number two and exercise the first option to renew engineering services agreement for expert witness testimony. I just hope that this isn't going to be dragging out Allen even more because this.
Doesn't have anything to do with, it doesn't have anything to do with this case.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Has to do with Peace of Paradise versus Walton County, which is the Doom Lake Outfall.
Okay, well, that's good to know, because I was just kind of.
Nothing to do with that case whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. And another thing that I was wanting to bring up, with all of the money that is being spent and afterward, I witnessed at the last meeting with Paxton, I don't understand why we can't maybe next year utilize our own golf course that we have to have a golf outing out there, you know, for our, to support ourselves, you know? I mean, we're so generous with our money, and we want to put beds and heads in everywhere, but there are things that are actually being money going for locals that was on the thing, you know, because DeFuniak Springs, they all get a little bit of money with the T D C funds that we were just talking about with the Synphonia. But it would be nice to see Eagle Springs be able to use their asset, which we do have, and to have a golf outing or something as well, because we have golf outings for Sand Destin to make sure that they give to charity and things of that nature. And Todd was so generous to give, and I think some other people donated with him as well, but the six thousand dollars for our team. And, you know, I think that.
I think I think Eagle Springs does a lot of of different things. I think they have a lot of activities and things that go on up there.
Yeah, well, I wonder, could they get some of that grant money from the T D C?
It's a whole different, it's a whole different issue.
Well, I didn't know, because, well, DeFuniak Springs, they're listed on there as well. That.
North Walton T D dollars could be used to fund the county facility for marketing or promotion to tourism, of course.
Of course, because there was other ones on there. The DeFuniak Springs is on the bottom of the list, and there was something else in the DeFuniak Springs, which is city stuff, but they they need the money.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I think that we should look to do that.
There were several things.
Yeah, to help support our local, our local teams and stuff around here.
Yep, I think that was the goal, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be good. Thanks.
Yes, Todd?
So I threw you to Mr. Brad here. So, and I felt, I felt kind of bad for the young lady who was up here with the event grant. So.
With what?
The event grant.
Oh, Kelly Carter.
So, for one, I didn't understand if there isn't even a mission and a vision statement specific for that. There certainly can be an ROI created for each event. Numbers are numbers, data's data, and create a simple ROI formula. So it ranks it one to ten or one to fifteen, instead of somebody having to pick and choose and you guys up here saying, well, we should give this to that and the other. First, first and foremost, you need a purpose statement, mission and vision statement, and and I can, we can create a ROI formula that basically calculates who deserves what, or at least give you a starting point, and then you can subjectively look at each one of them, determine whether or not you want to give or not. I just had a quick list.
Which is why I asked for it to be kicked back down to the T D C.
Yeah, exactly.
So we could do that.
Yeah, I think you would, and I think that's.
Whether we do it that way specifically, or whether there's another idea that maybe prevails, it's going to come back to the level that we can discuss there.
Yeah, because I was, I wanted to back you up, because I just felt she was kind of in the middle of, you know, picking and choosing.
Right.
The other thing is, and someone mentioned it, and it made me think about it again because I've thought about it many times, is that we need to stop this division between North and South Walton County. There truly needs to be some type of, something coming from the county where it's a county unification that bring us underneath, for the lack of a better word, one Walton, and stop this stupid division. I'm I'm honestly sick and tired of being tagged and gripped at simply because I live in South Walton County, simply because I come here and speak to support, you know, the county citizens as a whole. I don't want to be here. I am sixty-three years old. I am retired. I wanted to use my time today for something other than coming to these meetings. I don't enjoy it. It's not fun. I I I like to play a role in my county government, in my community, and I want to make a difference. But, you know, we we got to unify this county, and the beach issue is a significant issue for all of us, and someone needs to stand up and be a leader. We still don't understand the rules of the, the rules of the game, for the lack of a better word, around the beach, who can use it, who cannot, where the entrances are, where the entrances aren't, and and we just have this infighting, and it needs to stop. So we need to have some type of county town hall where we can get together in a less formal setting and at least talk through, that time went very quick. less formal setting, at least talk through, that time went very quick. Well, it didn't stop when Mr. Brad was talking. So that, the other thing is, going into that, we have a lot of lawsuits against our county private citizens and county businesses. Why can we not close those out? I know of one specifically that I just think is ridiculous and has lasted far too long and needs to be closed. That person is making a significant difference in our community, and it needs to go away. So we need to look at those cases.
We are.
And you guys get back there and make them go away.
We are.
Because as citizens, we want them to go away.
We do, too.
So it's just not fair. One other thing, yes, I feel blessed to have been able to contribute to the little girls softball team. There were three other folks that came after and texted me and made a contribution to be part of the blessing of the $6,000, and I'm thankful that those guys stepped up, and I won't mention them because I don't know that they really want their names mentioned. But I, at the same time, I don't believe it's the place in the county government to fund these events. So I would like to, and I will champion this, and I will participate, and I will chair it, and I will lead it, but we need to come up with some process as a county so that we can build a trust, we can build something that these little girls and these little boys, every child should have the ability to participate in sports regardless of financial or life circumstances. We're all different, we all come from different backgrounds. So I want to get, you know, a group of people together and figure out a way how we can help the folks in the North, maybe someone in the South, who knows? But those little girls, I went to the kickoff event on Tuesday last week, and it was a faith-based event, and I apologize, it was a very, my heart is full. I left the meeting early last time because I didn't want it to be about me, it wasn't about me. I didn't want to be the center of discussion. So I think we need to look at things a little bit differently and try to unify the county and come up with ways to make it work so that no child is left behind.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I'll just say, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I want to say that our Parks and Rec guys work really hard, and they do work a lot with the children, and they do provide a lot of benefit to the kids throughout the county, from all over the county, not just one certain area, and they work really, really hard. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to clarify, none of the county's active litigation, aside from the customary use case, which we had to, which we had to initiate litigation to comply with the statute, is the county suing anyone. The remainder of our cases, our cases where the county is the defendant and having been sued. So to the extent they said there was litigation that we have initiated against private citizens outside of customary use, it may have happened in the past. In four and a half years, I've not filed a lawsuit, I'll be up the county against any of our private citizens, and in reviewing our litigation matrix very quickly here, I see no examples of Walton County listed as the plaintiff.
Thank you.
And I did speak with you, Clay, on, you know, where were we at with the matrix, what, four or five years ago? And it's considerably down from that point.
Well, in the-
I remember being the squeaky wheel on Facebook with your matrix all the time, and now you have kind of put the muzzle on me, so, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Jennifer Kuntz. I live in Point Washington, and Clay, I was curious if, is it possible to not suspend or not repeal the neighborhood plan for Point Washington since it remains unchallenged?
So the revision to the plan is nonexistent based on the legislature's action. So there's no way to enforce it, is the cleanest way I can say that. Certainly, I think it will be very helpful for planning, and I'll be glad to make myself available to meet with planning, with you and the members there in Point Washington. If the entirety of the owners in Point Washington's subject to the revision that was adopted last fall, wish for it to be reenacted, we can do that under 180. We can do that in a matter of probably one month's time, if that's what you want. So let's take a look at that. But as of right now, my recommendation to the board remains, we are better off to take the action to repeal it. If it's unenforceable, keeping it on the books, we can reenact it just as quick as we repeal it. Once again, I don't expect it to be a two-year process. It can be done on 10 days' notice.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, excuse me, ma'am.
Could you show your last name? Katie.
Thank you. Anyone else? Are you coming up to talk? No? Okay. Was it, oh, yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a statement about what Mr. Rourke said about little girls being able to play. Well, little girls and little boys should also be able to play on the beach. Just a comment. And with the SB 180, the new development construction will affect evacuation of Walton County. So would it be possible for us to have a moratorium on building with this SB 180?
I was going to put that on the agenda for today, but we cannot do a moratorium right now under-
Moratoriums are specifically exempted. You cannot do them under 180. The word is written in there, and that's how it actually started.
Well, you should, you're going to, we are going to have a mess if we have a hurricane because with all this new construction, you know, the roads are going to be-
We don't disagree with you at all. We really don't.
I was just hoping we could do that.
We're, 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 you know, feel pretty much the same way you do. We know there's a lot going on, we're hoping things slow down a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for all you all are doing.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Ms. Harris?
I'll be very short. And Danny, I see you rubbing your head.
Oh, I just scratched mine.
I'm just, I'm just trying to avoid having to call each one of you so I can tell you here, because, you know, y'all can't talk to each other. But the one that you were going to vote to leave in for the symphony, three were Ventnor Dinner's, that were fundraisers at Vintage for the symphony. She brought up the Blue Dog, which is a private subdivision that's gated. It is also a fundraiser for the symphony. The Blue Dog thing is a ticket sale party for the fundraiser for the symphony. So Tiffany sent me a text and said her mother and I would be glad to look at all of these next time and figure out, before we start, the TDC starts giving, to look into each one. And I would be happy to look at them when they come back in and they have to prove what they've done. I think you can get a group of us bed tax collectors to look at them and see what they really did, where their advertising was, how much they spent of the money we gave them. So I just want y'all to think about that.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Well, that's what we're going to do next month.
As far as I know, I'll be there.
Anyone else that hasn't already spoken? Anyone else seeing none? I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.